Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Hillsborough Township Planning Board Meeting of November 18th, 2021. Please join me in a salute to the flag.
(inaudible)
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be advised this meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Publics Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, otherwise known as Sunshine Law. Notice of the 2021 Annual Meeting Schedule has been provided to the officially designated newspapers. The township clerk posted on the township website and available here at the Hillsborough Township Municipal Complex. Further notice has been provided to the same that as of July 1st of this year, the remainder of the 2021 Planning Board Meetings will be held in person here at the Peter J. Biondi Building. Live virtual participation will no longer be available. In addition, application documents have been made available on the township's website, the Silver Civic Clerk portal. Complete application files are available in the Planning and Zoning Departments for inspection in accordance with the public meeting notice. That may have a roll call of board members and also board and township professionals.
Mayor Raffini, Mr. Santa Romito, Mr. Chigarelli, Mr. Emigard, Absitt, Mr. Wagner, Peason, Scoboe, Mr. Hestag, Deputy Mayor Delcor, Mike Sher Julian, Chair Sarachi, Mr. Maskey, Mr. Bernstein, Mr. Hoyt, Bass.
And Michael, you're here. Okay, first up, we have a couple of meeting minutes for consideration. First one is the meeting minutes of September 23rd, 2021. Eric, who's eligible?
Mr. Wagner, Deputy Mayor Delcor, yourself, and the Vice Chairman.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve these meeting minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, any comments from the dais? Hearing done, roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Delcor?
Yes.
Mike Sher Julian?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi.
Yes. Next are the meeting minutes of November 4th, 2021.
Mr. Wagner, Mr. Peason, Mr. Scoboe, Mr. Hestag, Mr. Delcor.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, any comments from the dais? Hearing done, roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Peason?
Yes.
Mr. Scoboe?
Yes.
Mr. Hestag?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Delcor?
Yes.
Next are consideration of resolutions. We have one this evening, Campus Associates LLC Weiss with file number of 20-PV-13-MSPV. Eric?
The eligible members are Mr. Hestag, Mr. Delcor, and the Chairman.
That's it, okay. Any motion, please?
Some moves?
Second.
Okay, any comments?
I think we've commented this one did that.
I agree. Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Hestag?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Delcor?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi.
Yes. We do not have any planning board business this evening. Next up will be business from the floor for matters not on the agenda. If anyone from the public would like to comment or provide any comment to the board, feel free to do so. Do not, okay? And just a reminder, this is not a Q&amp;A session, it's just strictly for comments.
Maria, January 6, 7/20, East Freck Avenue, Manville, New Jersey. I'm also a Hillsborough Township property owner, Block 86, Lot 3, 2155 Camplain Road. I'm seeing that, well, never mind. In regard to Campus Associates LLC Weiss's application, I saw that there had been a resolution for an executive session regarding Campus Associates LLC Weiss litigation. I think this was at the last Hillsborough Township Committee meeting. At the last, I don't know if it was the Planning Board meeting, there was a public hearing, and Judge Shanahan had ordered that Hillsborough's governing body amend the Hillsborough Township zoning ordinance so that Campus Associates LLC's application was made conforming without any variances or waivers. So it was interesting to see that there's litigation again with campus. I don't know why there would be if there's an ordinance that orders the governing body to do what it needs to do to make the application conforming without waivers and variances. On Monday, I attended the Environmental Commission meeting, and that was in regard to the application of Toll Brothers, their gated golf course community. And there were quite a few property owners present from the Claremont Development who came to give their story of the issues that they have with flooding as it is right now, and that the development is going to cause additional flooding for their development. So there was a presentation given about stormwater study and what's going to be done with stormwater. And so it looks like there won't be any additional flooding in that area because the water's going to be diverted to a different area. And Mayor Richard Onderko from Manville was present, Councilman Joe Lukat was present, and there were a few other, two other people from Manville. Mayor Onderko gave a very strong talk about how Manville is being severely impacted by the developments of Hillsborough, which are all very close to Manville's border, and that's causing additional flooding problems for Manville. And this stormwater study that was shown from Toll Brothers looks like it's going to be diverting water in a direction of Manville, which would exacerbate what is already a very, very serious problem. And there were some property owners along the Millstone River Road who said also that if they divert that water, they're going to have even worse flooding. And that development has no affordable housing on it. So why that was passed, why they got an ordinance specifically and solely for them is also very interesting. Now, in regard to the Sherman, the Sherman tract, Block 86, Lot 21, I have stated it before, I have not seen a permit from the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection in regard to the flood hazard area, although I've been told it was given to me. I'm telling everyone here, it was not given to me. I had gotten a copy of a permit for three, three separate permit requests. I think it was for general permit 6, 6A, 11, but there's one that was not provided. I had submitted an Oprah request, and the response came back that there was no such document. So one of the permits was not provided. The other three that I got, the so-called permit approval, shows that it was not recorded with the county. At the bottom of that permit to the right, it states that it needs to be recorded or received by the county, and there was nothing there. So there's still an issue with the permits for the Sherman tract. But my other question, not question, but my comment is that Edward Martoglio, who is with RPM Development, he was approved for Block 86, Lot 21.01, which was one of the parcels that Block 86, Lot 20 was divided into. So I don't know why he is on an application to the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection for Block 86, Lot 21, when he is not the owner of Block 86, Lot 21. He purchased Block 86, Lot 21.01 for $1 to do a development on that parcel. And then there's a separate parcel, Block 86, Lot 21.02, which, according to township records, is going to be developed by M&amp;M Realty. So there's a lot of unanswered questions as to what's going on with the permits from the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection for the RPM development on Sherman tract, Block 86, Lot 21.01. Those are my comments.
Okay, thank you. Any additional members from the public that would like to provide any comments on matters not on the agenda this evening? Okay, seeing none. We do not have any considerations for ordinances, so we will go to this evening's application. It's Harvard Way, GMJ, File Number 21-PV-09-MSPV, Block 58, Lot 1.09, Route 206, AKA Harvard Way. Applicant is seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval. See bulk variances and waivers to construct a 107,366 square foot warehouse and associated improvements at the end of Harvard Way on the property, which is located in the I-3 light industrial zone. Counselor, I will turn the floor to you.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Mike O'Grady. I'm an attorney at Savo Shaw and Cortini Gillespie of Rodham Fisher in Summerfield. I'm here on behalf of Harvard Way, GMJ 4 LLC, as indicated by the chairman, receiving our preliminary and final major site plan approval necessary for the construction of 107,366 foot square house, the southern end of Harvard Way on Block 58, Lot 1.09, on a vacant 9.1 acre parcel. This project is proposed to be accessed via two driveway connections to the completed Harvard Way cul-de-sac. Access to Harvard Way is through Campus Drive, which empties into a right and right out onto Route 206 North. Subject property is located in the industrial 3 zone. Notably, warehousing, shipping, and receiving are permitted principal uses of the I-3 zone. Historically, this property was subject to a subdivision from my partner, Bill Savo, back in the 1980s. It was previously granted for development of a Phase 1 and Phase 2 in 1988, which granted the final major subdivision approval for the development of these lots. However, only Lot 1.08 and the construction of the detention basin on Lot 1.09 was completed. It's been vacant since that time. There's an existing industrial building to the north housing SiCam Corporation, which is a plastic manufacturer, as well as IPS Labs, which is a laboratory that creates formulation solutions for personal care industry. This building is proposed to be built on spec. No tenant has yet signed any lease. As such, and as our witnesses will testify, the operation would necessarily have to conform with the municipal ordinances and permissible uses in the I-3 zone. This application has four variances that have been identified by Mr. Maskey. The first one is, they're all C variances. The first one is a C-bulk variance for height, whereas 35 feet is allowable, and we're proposing 38.4 feet. So that's less than, you know, less than 10% over. So it's only a C-bulk variance. And again, that's desirable for the permitted warehouse use for operations necessary for warehousing portions of the use. There's also a small office use proposed in this application. The second variance is for the fire lane within the buffer. Chris Wimmerger had asked that we provide an area around the perimeter, the southern perimeter of the building that would be able to support fire truck in case of an emergency, although not required by ordinance. We had designed it that way after meeting with the township some time ago. And while the building fully respects the 100-foot buffer area, there is a grass reinforced 15-foot area that does provide for emergency access around the perimeter of the building, the southerly portion of the building. So although it's grass with gravel underneath, it perhaps technically is a variance because it's an emergency fire lane, which is a use, in theory, that impedes on that buffer area. And again, that's not a required ordinance, so that's at the request of your fire official. So we designed it that way. And that deviates from Section 188, 106E4B. There's also a tree removal variance. Right now, our revised application seeks to clear 61.35% of onsite trees. Our initial application did have a conforming ratio with respect to the removal of the trees, but after we met with the Environmental Commission, it was desirable that the detention basin be, for lack of a better term, overbuilt to provide additional capacity in the event of a rain event. We had that environmental meeting just a few days after Hurricane Ida. So again, not something that we proposed initially, but we think it would make sense, and Mike Ford will get into the details on the stormwater in some detail. And we substantially expanded the size of the detention basin after reviewing comments both from the board engineer, as well as from the Environmental Commission and the public. So now the detention basin allows excess capacity far above and beyond what is required by the stormwater regulations under NJAC 7:8. As for waivers, this application requests a submission waiver for community impact, since there's no school age children. And there are several design waivers that the board's professionals have identified. The first one is the parking spaces. We're proposing 9 by 18 instead of the 10 by 20. The minimum aisle width, 30 foot is required, we're proposing the 24 foot. The access drive must be 30 feet from the property line, and there's a 10-foot separation from the northern property line abutting the existing industrial building. This application also proposes two driveways, access driveways, from the completed roundabout cul-de-sac at the terminus of the southern portion of Harvard Way. So that necessitates a waiver because we want to propose two driveways. Although it is all on our property, the previous subdivision application has a public right of my dedication. So technically, we have two driveways off of that cul-de-sac, and that necessitates the design waiver. There's also an economic hardship waiver, limiting the replacement requirement to 1.5% of the total site improvement costs. Calculated out, that's going to be a contribution to the township tree fund in the amount of $116,675. The engineer had also identified loading docks to be 60 foot in length, and I'll have Mike Ford address that waiver and whether we need a waiver or we don't need a waiver. This application also proposes infrastructure necessary for the development, including 38 parking spaces plus four banked parking spaces. We buttressed our landscape buffer, especially on the southern border. It's in a wooded area, an existed wooded area, but we buttressed that. We have a one freestanding monument sign proposed near the entrance to the site, which is conforming. We have loading spaces and trash enclosures, which are conforming. Parking requirements are conforming. Total of 31 spaces is required. Again, we're proposing 38 parking spaces plus four banked parking spaces. Lastly, in connection with any interest from the members of the public regarding the Hurricane Ida flooding, just want to emphasize two things. Our experts will demonstrate that the stormwater runoff will be improved in two key areas. The current detention basin has fallen into disrepair since it was never built out this lot since the late 1980s. So the applicant intends to fix the spillway. Right now, there's no control output structure, so that would be improved with modern standards, as well as substantially expanding the capacity of the basin in excess of the stormwater requirements. So as such, we intend to demonstrate that this project will not have any negative impact on the stormwater condition in all fact, improve the status quo for the neighboring properties. With me tonight, I have the following witnesses. We have Greg Writington, he's president of the company on behalf of the applicant. We have Roberto Martinez, our registered architect. We have Betsy Dolan, our traffic engineer. We have Mike Ford, our civil engineer. And we have Matt Flynn or John McDonough, our professional planner. In compliance with the municipal lands law of the state of New Jersey, notice has been served, an affidavit publication and certified mailing, but all the owners on the certified list have been submitted to the board in anticipation of the hearing. And unless there are any legal questions, I would ask to swear in Greg Writington.
(inaudible) My name is Jordan Nash.
(inaudible).
Get the whole microphone up here.
Or use that.
Use mine on the stand. Use mine on the stand over there.
My name is Jordan Nash.
(inaudible).
I'm an attorney at the firm's Ash Legal, represent the Green Hills Community Group. We're opposing this opposition. Despite what counsel has said, though, this is a permitted use. There are significant issues with this application. A significant number of the variances and waivers that the applicant seeks are serving to add to the impervious surfaces on this site, and as a result, will increase the volume of stormwater runoff. I do have an expert witness that will testify to these items. Despite that, counsel has suggested that above and beyond, we don't believe that the applicant has done the proper testing to show that they've even met the standards, let alone go above and beyond for the stormwater performance standards at NJAC 7:8. In terms of the tree waiver specifically, we think that's a huge problem with that application. Not only are they seeking the economic hardship waiver to significantly reduce the amount of trees that should stay on this site, they're also seeking to have an off-site contribution, which is allowable under the Hillsborough ordinance. However, in this case, they do have to show that they cannot plant those additional trees on the site, and they've not done that in their application. And again, that will serve to significantly increase the impervious surface and significantly increase the volume of runoff in this application. And lastly, in order to obtain their variances and waivers, they do have to make certain showings, which we don't believe that they've made in their application or can make through testimony. That's my.
Okay, thank you.
I guess my only question would be, could you provide a list of who you're representing as objectives?
Well, I will say this. I represent the Green Hills Community, which is a nonprofit organization. The membership of that organization does include people within Hillsborough Township that well or may be adversely affected by the approval of this application. It does include certain individuals who own property and were noticed on that 200-foot list. So we do have standing to be here. There is a constitutionally protected right to privacy for members of such organizations, so I cannot give a list of all members of my group. I do understand the board's concern with efficiency of the proceedings, and that no member of my group may participate as a part of the general public. They don't participate through testimony through me, and any cross-examination on behalf of the group will come from me. And that's my position on that.
So just, Eric, Tahisha, are you going to provide testimony?
I'm not going to provide.
Okay.
I do have an expert witness that I will be.
I thought you said you were going to be.
Me personally, no.
No. The issue, however, is whether members of the public are allowed to testify at this hearing, who may be members of this group or represented by the objectors, through the objectors council. And I have indicated to Mr. Ash, separate and apart from Mr. O'Grady, that while I understand people's right to privacy, you don't get to have ostensibly two bites at the apple. So at some point, Counselor, you're going to have to figure out how to rectify the issue of right of privacy for potentially people who are not going to participate in this versus those who are. Otherwise, I'm going to tell you we're going to cross-examine every one of the, if they're a member of your group. And obviously, if it turns out that they tell a falsity, there's going to be a separate issue to be paid. So you and I have discussed this. You need to get, at some point, get one's hands around the fact that you cannot unilaterally declare anonymity in a proceeding such as this simply because you're either A, a member of a nonprofit organization, or B, you don't want to be subject to possible examination by other parties. At this point, it's not an issue because your clients are not, you're not cross-examining any of Mr. O'Grady's witnesses, but I suspect at the appropriate point where that is going to happen, you may cross-examine them. But at that point, the issue is who else gets up after that.
While I understand all of those ones, I will strenuously object to cross-examining that it's inappropriate of members of my group. I do, members of my group do understand that they are not members of the general public. They are members of my group, and I'm not participating as members of the general public. To the extent they wish to provide testimony.
They can't.
In that case, I will call them as a witness to testify, and they will be subject to cross-examination. I understand that. They understand that. I've not been before this board, but I've been before other boards, and that is the balance that we reach in those instances.
Eric, would it be appropriate that anyone from the vote comes up? And the first question under oath is whether or not they're a member of this group?
That's the so-called cross-examination that will end up happening in the absence of some list that indicates these people are members of.
I would think that that is improper because it's certain to the general public.
Well, Mr. Ash, they can't have it both ways. And we've had objectors before this board before, and the rules for your clients are no different than anybody else's. You have a right to become a part of an objector group. You have the right to be represented. But you then don't get the opportunity to come before this board and give testimony or provide commentary regarding the application without the board and the applicant knowing whether or not they're in fact represented by you, which therefore precludes them from giving testimony and or commentary separate and apart from through you. So at the moment, it's not an issue. I'm advising you, however, it's going to be an issue. So you need to figure out how you're going to address it, because I see it as an issue. And this is nothing different than we've ever treated any other objector we've been before this board.
My issue's just, I guess, slightly different. I believe there's an obligation for him to disclose who the objectors that he's representing are. Reading from Cox, the Learned Treatise, if a number of objectors jointly hire an attorney, then the board and all their parties are entitled to have a list of the objectors so represented filed with the board to get requested on this. So I think it's a program. Essentially, it goes, the board has to make a determination. Certainly, I'm not an objector's standing for these objectors, but if they live in California, then the board should know who they are. If it's a competitor, that's relevant to the board. I'm not saying it is. But my position is that he has to disclose who the objectors are that he's representing.
I would say in response to that, first of all, Cox is not the law. Cox is a respected treatise that everyone who's turned to New Jersey knows, but that particular section of Cox.
You speak into the mic so they can make sure they pick it up.
Yeah, Cox is not the law. It's a learned treatise. He is correct. That particular section of Cox does provide no actual legal authority, aside from Cox making the statement. I have disclosed.
Well, just for the purpose of the record, more than Cox, it's Cox, Jonathan Drill, and others who have authored the issue. So just for the purpose of the record, Bill Cox isn't the only one who's commented in that treatise. And you are correct, there is no case site, but it is a generally accepted principle in this business that objectors cannot maintain anonymity and standing relative to testimony. If nobody gets up other than you, Counselor, it's, I would argue, Mr. O'Grady will argue differently. I would argue it's a non-issue because then nobody is coming up here. But the chances of somebody, of nobody coming up here other than you to comment on this application, I would suggest, are slim and none. And therefore, based on the neighborhood, et cetera, at some point, sooner than later, you're going to have to come to grips with that issue. Otherwise, what I'm going to ask the two of you to do is provide my office with an opinion as to why he should and why you shouldn't, and I will ultimately. as to why he should and why you shouldn't, and I will ultimately have to advise the board accordingly. But I'm not going to do the homework for the board. If they're done, you're going to do it, and I'm going to review it. So you figure it all out between now and when somebody gets up here and comments on the next witness.
I will just say, to finish the point I was making, yeah, I fully agree Cox is not alone, but it's referring to the treatise itself. There is a constitutionally protected right to privacy in these instances. It's a balance. I fully appreciate that.
Mr. Ash, I'm a member of the First Amendment Lawyers Association, a nationwide group that deals with the issue of freedom of speech and the protection thereof. There is no First Amendment right of privacy.
Not First Amendment.
Or Fifth Amendment right of privacy, or any other constitutional amendment right of privacy relative to testifying at a public hearing.
Well, let's make sure we're talking about the same thing respectfully. In terms of members of my group giving testimony, as I said, they.
What comments?
Whether or not they, whether, start over. Any member of my group that gives testimony understands that they need to do so through me as a called witness. They cannot come up here as a member of the general public. I think that, I've repeated that, but I think that I've made that clear, so I don't intend to, you know, play fast and loose with that line here. Members of my group don't intend to play fast and loose with that line. I believe it's a Fourteenth Amendment. I may be wrong about that right to privacy here, that involves members of nonprofit organizations, much larger usually than this group. But nonetheless, the right exists, and I acknowledge that there's a balance here. But this is the balance I've struck that I proposed with other boards in this state.
I just want to preserve it for the record. I'm not going to push the issue.
The board may or may not, depending on the situation. I advise you accordingly. No one's going to get two bites at the apple, the proverbial apple, so to speak. If they're coming up or they're being represented by you, they don't get to come up here and give comments or any other statements. So at some point, the board's going to ask them that issue, so why don't we move on at this point?
Can I just ask one question, Mr. Riddick? You mentioned that they can't come up and give comments. Am I to understand that it's your position that my clients cannot be called as witnesses to testify?
No, my comment is that your clients are your clients. They cannot, however, come up here separate and apart from any testimony you elicit from them and make comments on the application as if they were a member of the public. If they are already represented by objectors' counsel, that's the reason you're here. Otherwise, they come up, they make their own comments, they don't need to be represented by counsel.
Understood. I think.
That's my point. The issue is, that's what I mean by the two bites of the apple.
Understood completely.
Mr. Chairman, I guess my question is, does this issue need to be resolved?
At the moment, no.
Before we move forward with testimony and run into this, who's on the list, who's not, who's testimony?
No, I think, I actually think they just resolved it.
Is it?
Anyone a member from the public that's on his, in his group is not going to come up on their own. He's going to call them as a witness.
Okay.
I would think if they come up on their own, it's, it doesn't count, no matter what they say.
Well, we have, no, we have the right to, we have to make sure. People who come up on their own are going to get asked a question by somebody, I suspect either Mr. O'Grognick or me. Are you a member of the objectors' group? If they say no, life moves on. If they say yes, your clients need to be aware, they won't be allowed to participate. That's why you're here.
As to balance this, please stay close here. I would only say that any questioning of the general public should not be made in intimidating fashion.
Mr. O'Grognick?
Okay. I'd like to bring up Greg Riddings.
I'm just sorry, you swear in a testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. I do. And can you state the place of origin and give us your affiliation, I guess? Gregory James Reddington, R-E-D-I-N-G-T-O-N. I'm a resident of Westfield, New Jersey. I grew up in Martinsville, New Jersey, and I am the owner of Redcom Design and Construction. That's a design-build firm that designs and builds commercial and industrial buildings throughout New Jersey. My wife is the lead architect, and I'm the lead engineer, I'm a licensed engineer and planner in the state of New Jersey. But I'm here in this matter as the owner or the contract owner, contract purchaser, for this Harvard Way lot that I hope to develop into an industrial building and lease it out.
How long have you been in the construction industry, Mr. Riddick?
In New Jersey, I've been employed at Redco or Redcom since 1997, and I've owned, or since 1993, and I've owned it since 1997. It's a second-generation business.
How many other commercial industrial buildings have you been involved with in construction?
Over the last, you know, 25 years at least, we've done about six or 70 years, so we've done, you know, close to 100.
And why did you choose the location here on Harvard Way for the proposed building?
Well, I mean, you know, simply it was presented to me. A realtor that I know had it available, and I liked the location. Hillsborough is an area that, you know, I know relatively well, and I grew up relatively near it. And it's in, you know, it's been an overlooked area from a development standpoint for quite a while, and this piece of property is a, you know, it's a unique piece of property. It's a, it's an industrial lot on a cul-de-sac that's very close to a highway, and I thought it would be a good opportunity to have as an investment for my family.
Is it correct that the building is being constructed on spec and you don't yet have tenants?
That's correct.
And is it your testimony that the end user of the building would then logically follow, have to conform to all the zoning requirements of the township?
Yeah, of course.
And just touching on the height variance in the I-3 zone, there's a 35-foot building height limit. Looks like we're asking for about another, up to 38.6 feet, so a couple extra feet. And why is the reason that the proposed industrial building seeks to have a couple extra feet of height?
Well, I mean, in a real world, we'd ask for more. Most industrial zones that are current, most industrial buildings being built right now are being built higher due to the, you know, improved nature of the equipment, facilities. Instead of sprawl, they'd rather go up instead of horizontally. It's good planning. This zone is, has been in place for a very long time. You know, 30 years ago, they were building buildings that were 24 feet high, 30 feet high, and everyone was happy with that. They didn't have the technology that they had today, and they had more land that was available, so they built buildings that were larger. They built buildings that were larger instead of taller because they were easy to operate. Nowadays, buildings are being built slightly taller. I try to be a good neighbor. The ordinance was 35 feet. Other zones in town have much higher elevations, but I guess this particular zone didn't get, hasn't been amended in quite a long time. So instead of coming in and, you know, seeking, you know, 10 feet, I found out that at the planning board, I could ask for 10% relief of the ordinance, and so that's what I'm asking for. You know, from an interior perspective, with the sprinkler systems, you need like a four-foot clearance and the lighting, with the size of the buildings and the wide column spaces that you need, that the new tenants are requiring, the depth of the structure is deeper. So I'm going to have about, you know, six to eight feet of unusable space inside the building, plus I have a roof slope of two or three feet to get the water off the building. So all told, even if I just want to rack up to 26, 28, maybe 30 feet, I need that height up to 38 feet. And really, from a marketability standpoint, 30 feet's kind of like a magic number inside the building. So that's a long answer to your short question. Sorry.
I have no further questions for the witness.
Yes.
So it sounds like you have quite extensive experience in this industry. You've built buildings before. You know how this works, correct?
I do, yeah.
Okay. So you said that this property was unique. Can you expand on what you mean by that?
Well, it's an undeveloped industrial lot with cul-de-sac, and that's what I meant by it.
Okay. Is there anything about the uniqueness of the property that creates the need for the height variance or any other variance that you're seeking?
Well, yeah, the property is, how do I look at your screen up again? But as I'm waiting, so the property is nine acres, but it's impaired somewhat by a number of different things. They have a residential buffer, hundred-foot buffer against residential zone, which impairs the development of the lot. And along the left side of the property, as you see in the picture, there's a number of wetlands that we are affected by. So, you know, ordinarily, this lot would be able to support a much larger facility, but because of the residential buffer, which I can support, and because of the existing DEP wetlands over to the right, you know, we're limited in size to what we proposed. Also, as an owner of the property, I want this building to look nice, so I want it to look nice from the street. Again, viability, the economic viability depends on how it looks, how it performs, the interior space, and so I've tried to design the building around the limitations of the property, but still, so it looks nice from the street.
I'm sorry, I may break in for a second. Mr. O'Grognick, can you please identify for the record what we're looking at?
Sure. And these were previously submitted. This is a colorized rendering of the proposed site plan.
When we mark, this is a one. And Mr. Ford, at some point, I'm assuming when he testifies, can indicate what that is. For purposes of placeholder, it's a one.
Mr. Reddington, did you complete your answer?
Yes.
Okay. So a lot of those uniqueness of the features, you said it was wetlands, it was close to residences, all that stuff. In your opinion, to the extent you know him to testify to this, would any increased impervious surface have a negative impact on those adjacent properties like the wetlands and residential developments?
No, my engineer will testify, but, you know, the New Jersey Stormwater and the NJDEP has done a very, very good job in the last 30 years protecting off-site detrimental issues from developments. And that's all in the stormwater regs and, you know, basically, just as simple as I can put it, once the sites developed, the actual impact to the off-site drainage will be less than it is now.
But you would agree that if there were additional volume of stormwater runoff causing flooding to adjacent residential properties, that would be a detriment to the general public? Is that correct?
That's a better answer from my, better question from my engineer.
Okay, so you can't answer that question? Are you aware, sir, again, maybe this is for the engineer, but I ask this because you did seem like you have some knowledge of, sorry, I have a tense, long part here. The intricacies here, this isn't your first rodeo, so to speak. Are you aware of how many of the variances and waivers that you're seeking are creating additional impervious surface on this site? None?
Yes. I mean, my impervious is because of the setback of the buffer and the wetlands, my impervious, I'm way, way under the allowable impervious on the site.
Okay, we'll speak with the engineers about how the testimony is done to get there, but is the fire, the fire lane and the buffer, that's not adding any additional impervious surface?
That's correct.
Okay. And the tree removal waivers and variance, are you seeking no additional impervious surface?
Can you explain that question a little bit more?
Well, you take trees out and you don't put them back in, you know, that used to be an impervious surface that collected a lot of water, and now something different is there. So that's not a waiver that you think is increasing the impervious surface on this property?
We're not seeking a waiver for impervious surface, as far as I know.
Okay. We'll talk more to the engineers about some of that. Just before I let you go, sir, this design, is it the smallest building on the site that you could build as economically feasible to use?
Yes.
Thank you.
I just have one redress. Are you aware of the area and yard bulk requirements in the I-3 zone, Mr. Reddington?
I'm aware that they are. They do have them.
Is it correct that the maximum impervious coverage for this subject property, permissible impervious coverage is 60%?
Okay, yep.
And is it correct that the proposed impervious coverage is 45, approximately 45.5%?
If that's what it says in my engineer's plans, I completely agree.
No further questions.
Mr. O'Grognick, can you ask the clients to please keep the noise down again up? Thank you.
Hey, Eric, just from a process perspective, when testimony happens, is it, then the opposition attorney, is that the next step? I want to make sure.
Yeah.
And then it goes to the board?
Well, or the board can go before the object, or either one. The issue is the objector goes minimally before the public.
Okay. Just want to make sure. Just trying to understand for the process.
If the board has questions.
Any questions from the board at this point? Unless I'm going to entertain a motion open to public. Got a motion?
Motion open to public. Second.
Okay, I'm on favor.
Aye.
So is there any members from the public and not members of the nonprofit would like to come up and question the testimony by this witness? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Maria Janusak, 720 East Freck Avenue, Manville, New Jersey. Looking at the application.
Ms. Janusak, just for the purpose of the record, you are not a member of this group, is that correct?
I am not a member, no.
Thank you.
On the application, and this seems to be the norm for a lot of applications before the planning board, there's a question here, specific site concerns, and it says be specific, historic, environmental, et cetera, and there's nothing, nothing here. Now, this is an application that's here before the board, so what are the specific site concerns for this, for this site? As far as historic, environmental, et cetera. This is the application.
I don't have any site concerns.
Well, all right, so there are no environmental, there are no wetlands?
I didn't say that, no. There are wetlands.
Well, wouldn't that be considered an environmental concern for that site?
We went in front of the Environmental Commission, and we're getting the applications from the DEP.
Who fills out this application? Because it's, there are site concerns, there are, there are environmental issues. Why isn't anything filled in over here? So you're saying there are no, there are no environmental concerns on this property?
I said I don't have any environmental concerns with it. We've had, you know, as part of the application process, we are making applications to the New Jersey DEP. We're meeting with the town's Environmental Commission, and we're meeting, you know, we're speaking with the town's planner, engineer, et cetera. So a number of people are discussing all of these issues.
So if you are applying to the NJDEP, then aren't there site concerns like the wetlands and that you have to have a permit from the NJDEP?
So what's the question? I'm sorry.
You're saying there are no specific site concerns, but you're saying.
No, I said I don't have any specific site concerns.
Because, because you are applying to the NJDEP. Are you applying to the NJDEP?
Ms. Janusak, can you let the witness answer your question before you talk over him, please, for the record?
Because, because I've asked the question.
Could you please, yes, let him answer the question. If you don't like the answer, you can ask another one, but please don't talk over him. Thank you.
All right. I'm waiting for the answer.
Can you repeat the question?
On this application, it asks for specific site concerns. It says be specific, historic, and environmental, et cetera. What are the specific site concerns on this property?
So I personally don't have any specific site concerns about the property, but in But involved with this property, because there are wetlands, we have made applications to the New Jersey DEP. Because it is in the township of Hillsborough, we have made application to the township of Hillsborough. And as well as Somerset County and a few others of my professionals can answer for you. So every issue that this property has, we, it's our responsibility as the applicant to address that issue with the applicable board person or organization that has jurisdiction, and we've done all that.
Okay, so then, then nothing needs to be, as far as you're concerned, nothing needs to be documented on this application?
Ms. Janusak, one of the checklist items is a full environmental impact report, which has been submitted, as well as extensive other engineering checklist items. So to the extent that you're mischaracterizing the record, there is an environmental impact statement that's part of this application.
Okay, I understand. I have seen some of the records, I have looked online in regard to this application. And I'm only asking about this, this application here. There is a line, there's a question that needs to be answered, as far as I'm concerned, because there are freshwater wetlands, at least that environment.
Ms. Janusak, I think it's about the third or fourth time you've asked the same question.
I am responding, I am responding to Attorney O'Grady.
You're questioning the witness, the attorney.
Attorney O'Grady spoke to me and said that there's all these other things, yes, but this application has a line that is specific.
And we've established, and you've established, they have no concern, they indicate no concern. So, next question.
Thank you. Okay. As far as the applicant's information, it says Harvard Way JMJ4 LLC. Is that you?
It's my wife and I.
Okay. So there needs to be, there's a ownership disclosure statement. So who is supposed to provide ownership disclosure? The applicant or the owner of the property?
It's a legal question. I'm going to direct my witness not to answer. It's a legal question.
All right, there is attached with the application a project narrative explaining the proposal and any variance waivers. At the bottom, it says summary, two variances and seven waivers. Yet when I listened to the variances, there are four variances. First one is for the height, second is in regard to the proposed fire lane within the buffer. And then there was a tree removal variance, which is not, which is not provided on the narrative. And then number four was, I didn't catch everything, something to do with the stormwater. So what are, what is, first of all, this is not information that needs to... There is no information here on this project narrative that should be here, because there are three variances, not two variances. So can you give me some information on the tree removal variance? As to how much will be, how many trees are going to be planted and how much money is going to be provided for, to whatever fund you need to provide money?
I'm going to direct my client not to answer the question. That's more appropriate for the site engineer, Mr. Ford.
And the stormwater, what is the issue where the variance that's being applied?
There's no, there's no variances related to stormwater. And by the way, the narrative, which is not a requirement, is periodically updated and revised as the application proceeds. So when we submit an application, certain, once the professionals review it, then we revise the narrative. The most updated narrative is on the website. We've revised it several times, specifically after the professional review memorandums that are circulated.
Okay, except that everyone is here today for this public hearing, and this is the information that is provided to us, and this is what we are asking questions on.
That's incorrect.
Oh, it's incorrect?
Yes.
So what is correct?
I revised the narrative, and it's been updated and uploaded to the website.
I got this information today. I looked online, I stopped at the library before I came here, and I printed this out, and this is what was provided as far as today is concerned. And that's why I'm asking about this, because, so actually, how many variances are being requested?
We've already gone through that. There's four variances.
So number three is the tree removal variance, and what is the fourth variance?
Again, this has already been, we've already gone through this. But just for the record, there's four variances. There's a bulk variance for height, where 35 feet is required and 38.4 feet is proposed. There's a fire lane within the 100-foot buffer. There's a variance for tree removal, where 60% is permitted, and we're at 61.35%. And there's also another questionable variance that I listed for notice purposes related to removal of a specimen tree in the detention basin pursuant to prior conditions of approval. A tree has since died. And after meeting with the Environmental Commission, the decision was made to increase and expand the capacity of the detention basin. So I've noticed, out of more than due caution, a variance or modification of prior condition of approval for removal of the tree in the existing detention basin. Four variances.
So you're talking about the tree as being the fourth variance?
I don't think it's variance, it wasn't identified by the board planner, but I noticed it, because it was a condition of a prior approval. I believe it would be more appropriately characterized as an amendment or relief from an existing prior condition of approval.
When was that prior condition of approval granted?
1988.
So why is that something that's brought up how many years later? Does that even, does that even, is that even relevant to this application today?
I don't think you have a question, can I?
Excuse me?
What's your question? Is it relevant?
Is it relevant? It was an application from 1988. At what point do these, do those records no longer apply? Since so many years have gone by, so much has changed. You're talking about a detention basin from 1988. Is that correct?
Mrs. Janusak, before Mr. O'Grady answers two issues. One...
Excuse me, what?
Mr. O'Grady's not testifying. Two, the question is irrelevant to the witness's testimony, which is what you're up here to question about. You asked what the variances were, they were granted. That's the information you sought. We're not getting, I don't believe that Mr. O'Grady should be getting into a discussion of whether or not a 1988 approval of this property hazard doesn't have relevance that ultimately an issue that the board is going to have to decide that relates to whether or not there's a variance needed, or whether they're going to grant the relief requested.
So the witness doesn't have to answer anything in regard to the variances?
Witness doesn't have to answer anything that he didn't testify to, relative to the application. And he didn't testify as to what the four variances were. That was Mr. O'Grady's introductory statements relative to same. You can comment on it all you like, you can even ask questions of individuals who may provide testimony related to that. But the witness here didn't.
So in regard to commenting on something that Attorney O'Grady said, I can comment on that as I ask questions of a witness? Or is that for comment for later? When is it appropriate for me to comment on something that I have heard from the attorney?
In terms of comments, that's comments at the end of the application. In terms of issues that may come up during witness testimony that may relate to that issue or any other, that's when you can ask those questions.
Okay, so what specifically then are the areas that the present witness can respond to?
Anything that he testified to.
No different than any other witness in any other hearing in this board.
So I think it was stated that the, this property is nine acres, and there's a residential buffer. How, what is, what is, what is the distance from this property to the, what is it? To the, is that, what residence, what residences are we speaking of when we're talking about the residential buffer?
I'm going to object to the question, again, more appropriately, more directed to the site plan engineer, Mr. Ford.
Okay, but this was something that was discussed, yes?
I'm going to direct my client not to, not to answer your question.
All right, there's a question asked about the stormwater runoff being a detriment to the general public.
I'm going to object to the question, direct my witness not to answer. It's beyond the scope of direct. I'm going to direct my client not to answer the question. It's more appropriate for the site plan engineer.
Okay, so I think that Mr. Reddington stated that he is the contract purchaser. So this is, this, this, the purchase of this property by Mr. Reddington is contingent upon his getting approval for this application? Is that, is that correct? You are the, you are the contract purchaser?
Yes.
You are not the owner?
I'm the contract purchaser.
So you're currently not the owner? And so your contract is contingent upon getting approval of this application?
My contract has some contingencies.
Is it, is it contingent upon getting approval of this application?
Yes.
Yes. All right, yes. All right, that's all for now, thank you.
Thank you. Any other?
Just for the purpose of expediency and trying to make sure we get through the, all the testimony, the process is, when there's a witness, you can ask the witness questions, but on the testimony. It's not a free-for-all, okay? We're trying to make sure we can, we can get your questions answered, but it's got to be on what they testify to. Okay, so that's for all the members of public to come forward.
Hello, I'm Kristy Garcia, I'm at 166 Johansson.
Ms. Garcia, are you a member of the nonprofit organization?
No.
No?
No, I'm just here by myself. I just had a couple of questions. The plans, oh, the questions are right in my head. The plans as of now are to remove 300 trees and replace...
Ma'am, you're going to have to speak to the mic, the board can't hear you.
The trees you're removing are 300 and change, and you're replacing 90 and change? And...
I don't have that information, but my engineer will.
Okay. And the drainage from the roof of the building, I believe, is going into the existing drainage ditch?
It's a better question for my engineer.
Okay. And are the words affordable housing anywhere in this application?
I, uh...
No.
No.
Okay. So potentially, the flooding that we are currently experiencing could stay the same or get worse. And your hands aren't tied. Is that what I'm understanding?
So can you repeat the question?
The flooding will, that we currently experience, are gonna, is gonna stay the same or get worse on what's currently in the application?
Your flooding will not get worse because of this application.
How do you know that?
So my engineer's better to answer the question. But the New Jersey DEP has done a very, very good job of regulating stormwater management to help that situation.
It's the witness, that's who you're talking to. It's not, not us yet.
All right, thank you.
Is there anyone else in the public, in your audience, that would like to question the testimony of this witness? Okay, I don't see any. And I know I've received a request for a short recess. I think it's about 20 of, well, five minutes.
Hillsborough, New Jersey, celebrating 250 years of a rich history.
Hi, I'm Mayor Sean LaPony, and I'm proud to showcase Hillsborough, one of the best places to live in America.
From the preserved farms that helped feed the world, to the Van De Veer House, to the John R. Stott's House, restored and currently utilized for business, to the magnificent and world-famous Dupe Farms...
Where you can walk or ride a bike through their historic grounds. To the iconic and machinic reformed church, and just down the road is our fabulous machinic mill located right on the picturesque Rowerton River.
You're invited to visit Hillsborough, a great place to live, work, play, and do business anytime, and experience over 250 years of proud history in Hillsborough, New Jersey.
Good morning, and welcome to the opening of the Peter J. Biondi Route 206 bypass here in Hillsborough Township. Thank you for joining us here today for this very much anticipated event here. Can't think of one that we've been waiting for longer. As we open the remaining sections of this vital roadway, which has been named in memory of the late Assemblyman Peter J. Biondi. This roadway will officially open for traffic on Saturday, June 5th. I'm joined here today by my colleagues, the Hillsborough Township Committee, Deputy Mayor Frank Delkor, Committeeman Doug Thompson, Committeewoman Janine Erickson, and Committeeman Jeffrey Wright. I would also like to thank this opportunity to introduce some other guests here this morning. Senator Kip Bateman, who was a sponsor of the legislation to actually get this name, this road named after the late Assemblyman Biondi, and thank you for that. Assemblyman Roy Fryman, Commissioner Paul Drake. And please help me welcome Ms. Joan Biondi. Thank you for being here today on this historic day for Hillsborough Township. The late Assemblyman Peter J. Biondi was a pillar in our community for over 35 years. As a result of time serving the community as a member of the Township Committee, mayor, freeholder, and assemblyman, he was often referred to as Mr. Hillsborough. During his entire tenure in public life, he remained committed to the betterment of Hillsborough. His tireless dedication and support of Hillsborough was unwavering, hence why the 2013, in 2013, this roadway was officially named after Peter J. Biondi. The bypass is a vital part of Hillsborough's economic development. Not only will it bypass lessen congestion and traffic along the existing 206, but it'll also serve as the impetus for a future town center that is envisioned in our Township master plan. This long-awaited and much-anticipated vision is now a reality. Originally considered in the early 1970s as a Hillsborough township began to develop, unfortunately, it remained only a concept until the early 2000s. In August 2010, township local and state officials broke ground to officially start the construction of the bypass at midsection, similar to where we're standing right now. We thank past and current state administrators for their diligence in seeing this project through. This portion will shift traffic on the new 3.6-mile section of US 206 to the east of the existing highway between Mountain View Road and Old Somerville Road, creating the opportunity for further development of the town center along the current 206. The project limits are from Mountain View Road to Hillsborough Road on the southern end, and from Animal Road, Somerset County Route 514, to Old Somerville Road on the northern end. To the north, the widening will work, will continue until the final phase is complete. We have looked forward to this day, and we now look forward to the development of our downtown Hillsborough Main Street vision. Please stay tuned as we continue to grow and improve and remain as one of the best places to live and work in America. Again, thank you all for being here this morning. We will now have the official ribbon cutting, and that will conclude our ceremony. And again, thank you to our honored guests who are here today, and Ms. Joan Biondi. And again, thank you to our honored guests who are here today, and Ms. Joan Biandi, and thank you very much. One, two, three. Hi, I'm Mayor Sean LaPony, and I'm proud to showcase Hillsborough, one of the best places to live in America.
From the preserved farms that helped feed the world, to the Van De Veer House, to the John R. Stott's House, restored and currently utilized for business, to the magnificent and world-famous Duke Farms...
Where you can walk or ride a bike through their historic grounds. To the iconic and machanic reformed church, and just down the road is our fabulous machanic mill located right on the picturesque Rowerton River.
You're invited to visit Hillsborough, a great place to live, work, play, and do business anytime, and experience over 250 years of proud history in Hillsborough, New Jersey.
We're back from recess. Thank you. Counselor, next witness.
Okay, our next witness is John McDonough, he's our professional planner.
He's writing a testimony, he's going to be the truth, the whole truth, the truth. Yes, I do. Sure, hi there everyone, my name is John McDonough, it's spelled M-C, capital N-O-U-G-H, and I am the project planner.
Could you provide just some brief educational background and your license?
Sure, my education comes from Rutgers, and I have a license in professional planning here in the state of New Jersey, which is current and in good standing. God bless you, excuse me, thank you. And I testify in that capacity throughout the state on a nightly basis. What's nice about our practice is we get to see the full cross-section of New Jersey, east-west, north-south, urban, suburban, rural. I'm also a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners, which is a national certification that basically lets us testify anywhere in the nation, although I stay local.
Could you provide your, your conclusions with respect to the variances, waivers, softness applications?
Are you seeking to have Mr. McDonough qualified as an expert witness in the field of planning, Mr. O'Grady?
Yes, sir.
Okay, any objections from the board? Zena, we accept.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I think my testimony will actually be relatively brief, because the relief that the applicant is seeking is relatively minimal here. I know we do have interested parties, and there's always concern and sensitivity. I'm going to refer to the exhibit that's on the screen now.
Was this marked as A1?
A1. A1. So you, you get a sense of the context from this exhibit, and we're going to use north as, as straight up. We are at the terminus here of Harvard Way, which is an industrial road, you can see the big box, industrial building, and this is really the last piece of Harvard Way. It's going to be filled, one of the nice things about the application is that our applicant is going to fill this turnaround, which is presently just a bunch of dirt, unfinished, so there's a safety element to what the applicant is proposing here. And of course, we get it, we've got the residential neighbors to the south, and also spanning over to the east as well. Runoff is obviously probably the core concern here. As you heard, New Jersey stormwater management rules are at the cutting edge across the whole nation here. The applicant has to make the runoff conditions better, and this is going, this application is going to make those conditions better for the neighbors and the neighborhood, it has to. With respect to the build-out here, this tan-colored building that you see is fully what's contemplated under the zone scheme. There's no relief that the applicant is seeking relative to the building size, relative to the building setbacks, relative to the overall floor area. This is basically the cube that the plan says is okay. We're looking for some height relief, I'll come back to that in a second, but it's really de minimis, it's C-level relief, it's not a D variance, and it's only, it's actually less than 3.5 feet. This site sits in a bowl relative to the neighbors, so the effective height is not going to have a, a perceivable impact on the neighborhood. Also important, what you see in the gray color here is also what's contemplated under the redevelopment, calling it a redevelopment plan, under the zoning ordinance. This site is at 75% capacity of what the ordinance says is okay from an impervious coverage standpoint. So, if you will, the glass is only three-quarters full, it could be another quarter-full before we reach the tipping point of having too much impervious coverage on this property. So that's important as well, because we know that impervious coverage translates to runoff. This is actually less than what the ordinance says is okay. We had our interested party talk about some of the constraints on the site, we have respected the constraints, and the wetlands will all be preserved or designed around, I'll say, in accordance with NJDEP regulations. So, to the extent that we do have the stewards of the environment being the NJDEP, the applicant is respecting those rules as well to safeguard those environmental features. You can see that we have detention basin in the area in the back, which was previously disturbed, and is actually being slightly increased, again, in the interest of protecting the neighborhood and providing for additional stormwater annihilation and water quality. That's a recommendation of the Environmental Commission that does trigger some of the additional relief that the applicant is seeking relative to tree removal. But the tree removal that the applicant is seeking is not for 374 trees, that's not the variance that the applicant is seeking here. The relief is for nine trees, it's nine trees coming down above what would be allowed under your 60% threshold under the ordinance. So, the key point here is that this application is actually in substantial performance with what your zoning ordinance would require. And you do have a good table that's provided in one of the reports to show how there is strict compliance here with the ordinance requirements. And I'm just turning to page number two of the, of Mr. Maskey's October 1st, 2021 report, and if you just run down it, you can see how this does substantially comply with the requirements of the ordinance. The main thing in the I-3 district is that we have a two-acre minimum, we're dealing with a supersized site here. That means this is a site that has excellent carrying capacity to accommodate the development that's before the board. 9.1 acres, more than four times larger than what the zoning requirement would be, we have excessive lot width, we have excessive or generous lot depth, so we have excellent proportions on this property to accommodate the development that's before the board. Compliance on the side yard, compliance on the rear yard, and as I said before, compliance on the overall impervious coverage as well. 60% is what could be filled here in terms of coverage, we're 45.5%. So, every applicant is entitled to a certain degree of predictability and assurance in terms of compliance with the ordinance, it's exactly what the applicant is doing here. The relief that the applicant is, those last two rows that you see at the bottom, really relatively minimal. The building height at 38.4 feet versus 35 feet is going to have minimal, if any, negative impacts on the neighborhood. As we said, this topography makes up for that additional height, actually sinks the building into the landscape, so the effective height is not going to have any substantially adversely negative impacts on the neighborhood. This is not a D variance, but I'm going to turn to what would be the operative case if this were a D variance, call it the Grosso case, it points out the purposes of height control and whether anything would be violated here. Here, clearly it's not. The additional 3.4 feet is not going to create any objectionable shadow effects on neighboring properties, is not going to create any additional traffic or intensity of use, and certainly not going to create a negative visual impact. And I'll underscore the point here that our applicant is taking what is now a deciduous buffer on a site that is zoned for commercial and industrial activity, and actually wrapping it in a double row of evergreens, which will have a year-round screening effect that is presently not there where we have a deciduous forest. So improvement from a visual standpoint over that which could be if the applicant did not provide that buffering in there. Speaking of the buffer, the applicant is providing a 100-foot buffer, which is a requirement of the ordinance. The relief that the applicant is seeking is with respect to having a grassed area that will be utilized for, on a very interim basis, if at all, for emergency vehicles, it's just there for firefighting and safety, a request of your fire department to have full access around the building. Grass is allowed in the buffer, grass is what's proposed, the applicant is just looking for relief to allow that to be navigable, navigable or usable in the event of an emergency only by emergency vehicles. This is not going to be for service vehicles, for cars, or anything, or for storage, or anything of that ilk. The applicant is providing car parking, providing loading spaces, relatively modest loading area here, so this is not going to be large-scale distribution center type of use, but your basic warehouse type of use. That serves the public good, as we know especially in these times, as a permitted use in performance with the zoning code. It's a use that is necessary and essential link in the logistical supply chain. We know how important the supply chain is, whenever we see a choke point in the system, we've got it happening now out there in California with all those boats that are out in the water. This is a use that provides for balance in terms of supply and delivering goods to the public, avoids those fluctuations when we hit a choke in the supply chain, and allows businesses to store goods and wares in a house, if you will, which is the exact purpose of what a warehouse is. When COVID hit back in March of last year, the CDC, the US Homeland Security, and the Office of Emergency Management Services all called this land use an essential service, critical infrastructure was what they called it. When COVID hit, our medical workers went to work, so did our warehouse workers. So again, while office workers and the like did not go in, this was still an operational land use. So it is important, certainly promotes the public welfare, and that's what the balancing test is supposed to be whenever we're asking for C-level relief on the positive side, for the reasons I've just given you, the application as a whole is going to promote the general welfare, that's purpose A. We also see the advancement of purpose G, the provision for a variety of uses in appropriate locations. I think there is an aesthetic element to this as well, with that enhanced buffering and the landscaping that's being provided in a strategic location that goes towards purpose I. And then purpose M, the efficient use of land, working within the space, the building envelope that is contemplated under the zone scheme. All said, this is a very good application from a planning standpoint, in terms of the flexible C-balancing test, the benefits of the application as a whole substantially outweigh any detrimental impacts. For all of the reasons that I've given, all relief can be granted without any substantially adverse impacts on the public visually or functionally, or without any substantially detrimental impacts to your zone plan or ordinance. Nothing in this plan conflicts with your 2018 Master Plan Reexamination Report, which does not make any recommendation for the changing of this particular site in terms of the zoning. This is your I-3 zone, this is what the I-3 zone wants. Again, the relief is relatively minor here, and with that, I would move that the board does have the, the authority here to grant the relief, being that the applicant has met its statutory burden.
Thank you, John. No further questions.
May I ask a question? The visual buffer that you referred to, the two rows of evergreens, what's the approximate size of those evergreens?
Mike, I'm going to turn to you.
That's a question for...
Six to eights, I'll, I'll take, I think it's six to eight feet tall.
Can we, if the witness knows the answer...
I mean, I don't have a problem with referring it to Mr. Ford.
I'll defer to Mr. Ford.
Okay, thank you.
So from a planning standpoint, could you talk about that spillway? Because I know since you met with the Environmental Commission, kind of reconfigured it to kind of ease the overflow of the, of the water flow, but is that something Mr. Ford more to answer, or can you kind of talk to it a little?
I'm going to get directed not to answer that question, I feel it coming, but I, I will defer to the engineer, it's more of a technical question than a planning question. Certainly it provides an environmental benefit and is still more to management benefit.
David, any comments from a planning perspective?
Not at this point.
Okay.
Mr. Donahue, first question for you, did you submit a report?
I did not.
You did not, okay. The first thing you spoke about was that you were going to fill in what was dirt in the circle, I'm pointing to the left-hand side of the exhibit up there. You're going to fill in the dirt with what exactly?
We're going to complete the, the roadway and the cul-de-sac in accordance with sound engineering and planning standards, which is to provide a, a safe, solid paved surface for the turnaround of vehicles.
But it isn't going to be paved, and it wasn't paved before, is that correct?
Well, it's probably debatable, it's so packed over there, I'm not sure if it would be considered from an engineering standpoint as, as pavement at this point. It may even have gravel there, I can't remember.
You said it was dirt in your direct testimony?
I said it was unpaved, I, I don't know that I said it was actually dirt.
So if you said it was dirt, you didn't mean to say it was dirt?
Correct.
Okay, and so you're not aware then if that area there is currently paved or not?
I can't remember if it was gravel or if it was compact dirt, I can't remember.
Okay, but gravel and compact dirt is not paved, is that correct?
I don't know that I agree with that, it depends on if you're talking about it from an impervious coverage standpoint. Gravel is typically treated as impervious coverage.
Are you an engineer, sir?
Am not.
Okay. So what, what's your knowledge then of gravel being classified as an impervious surface?
Experience.
Experience, as a planner?
Yes.
Not as an engineer.
Hanging out with planners all night, listening to testimony.
I'm asking you for your expertise, sir.
Yes, I'm reliant upon the testimony of, of other experts that I hear every single night.
Okay, so you're not giving me an opinion then on that, on that issue?
Is that a question?
Are you?
Am I giving an opinion on that? I'm, I'm trying to answer your question the best I can.
I'm just trying to get to an answer as, as to whether or not you're telling me that that circle area was currently unpaved and is going to be paved.
It is currently not asphalt, and it is going to be asphalt.
Okay, so just trying to clear up the point here, what is currently there?
I can't remember the condition if it's actually gravel or compact dirt, I can't remember.
You refer a lot to the New Jersey stormwater management rules as cutting-edge, and it was reported you saying that they're very good, they're leading, I actually agree with you on that. Would you agree with me that if the, if the standards under those rules were not met on this application, then no matter how good those rules are, it wouldn't...
The standard has to be met, I'm not sure what the question is. The applicant's not going to skirt the regulations, the applicant can't.
Right, so if, if they don't meet the performance standards, then they can't rely on the rules to tell me that their application is good.
Right, if, if the stormwater management rules are not met here, I would offer that that, that hits the negative criteria, for sure.
So, you said that there is no relief being sought for the size of the building, is that correct? Aside from the height, aside from the height?
Correct, the, the box, the box conforms with the controls of the ordinance.
Okay, but wouldn't you agree with me that the relief being sought allows for the building size to be as large as it is?
They're interrelated, yes, but the box itself conforms. The, the, the box is not in the buffer, other elements are.
But if the buffer, for example, was not infringed upon, then the, what is... But if the buffer, for example, was not infringed upon, then the one infringing upon the buffer would have to be where the building is, and the building would have to be smaller. Is that correct?
It's a factual question, yes. It's a factual question, yes, but that doesn't change my planning conclusion that the impact is not substantially adverse and that the test is met. Yes, a smaller building could go here, but that's not the test.
What test are you referring to, sir?
C2 balancing.
But you... But if the sea, if any variance relief is not being sought here, then what is in the buffer would have to be where the building is, and the building would have to be smaller. So if no relief for granted, the building would have to be smaller. Is that correct?
A variance should not be denied just because it's a variance. Again, that's not what the test is.
That's not the question I'm asking you, sir.
Well, you're asking me if we could eliminate the variances with a smaller building, and that's a factual question. The answer is absolutely. It's geometry.
One other thing you said that was interesting to me. You said this property sits in a bowl. Can you elaborate on that?
Topographically, it sits lower relative to neighboring properties, and I'll let the engineer address the specifics of the grades.
Okay. From a planning perspective, and if you want to defer to the engineer for any part of this question, I appreciate that, but just because you brought it up in your direct, from a planning perspective, when a property sits below other properties, wouldn't it pick up off-site contribution of stormwater?
Water flows downhill. Yes.
Yes. Okay. And another thing you spoke about in your direct was the impervious coverage numbers being below what the standards are here. Do you recall the testimony?
Substantially below.
Substantially is a characterization, right? What's the percentages?
It's 75% of what is allowed under the zone plan. The absolute numbers are 45%. I'll get the exact number for you. It's 45.5%. It's four. I just want to get the exact number. 45.5...
Counselor, I appreciate you just trying to help out, but I'm asking the witness questions.
There it is. Okay, 45.5% divided by 60% allowed equates to 75% and change.
Is that counting the full property or is that just the Area A that is to be developed?
I'll leave that to the engineer to answer how that calculation was arrived at.
I believe I saw in, I'm not sure if it was the, maybe the Environmental Commission's memo, there were numbers of, I think, percentages in the 50 of impervious coverage on the site, so closer to 60. Did you see those in the documents?
I'll leave that to the engineer to reconcile. That may have been before plans were revised or changed.
Okay. So moving on then, you did say in your direct testimony that all of the wetlands on the property will be preserved. Do you recall that testimony?
No, I said the wetlands will... If I did, what I meant was the wetlands will be, the design will be in conformance with the NJDEP regulations with respect to wetlands.
So the wetlands will not be preserved?
The wetlands will be preserved in accordance with the DEP regulations.
Oh, I got that incorrect. The wetlands will be filled, and that is why you need NJDEP permits. Is that correct?
Counselor, if you're going to ask the witness a question, I would ask him a question, not presuppose testimony.
I'll back off a little bit. I appreciate that. So is the reason you need NJDEP permits because the wetlands will be not preserved?
Again, the wetlands will be treated in accordance with NJDEP regulations with the Wetlands Code.
Okay, but that does not mean then that they will be preserved. Is that correct?
An objection. Ask and answer, not pretalk.
I don't believe he's ever answered the question.
It's an engineering question.
He spoke to it in direct testimony.
To the extent the witness can answer the question, answer the question, Mr. McDonough.
I'll say if the witness cannot answer the question, then I move that that testimony be stripped from the record.
The testimony was, as a point of clarification, that the treatment of the wetlands will be in accordance with the NJDEP regulations.
Okay. And for clarification, that does not mean that they will be preserved?
Correct.
You also spoke to the increased size of the stormwater basin on the property, and I believe you said that that would reduce the runoff quantity from the site. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, are you speaking to the difference between volume of runoff quantity and peak flow rate? Are you... Is that what you're speaking to?
It's an engineering question.
Okay, so that testimony you gave then was not necessarily in your purview?
Yes, the post-development flows will be less than the pre-development flows.
Okay, but when you say flows, are you referring to peak flow rates or are you referring to overall runoff volume?
I don't know. I'll defer that to the engineer.
So therefore, the testimony you gave was outside of your expertise?
From a planning standpoint, it certainly was not.
Yet you defer to the engineer?
Yes.
All right, I'll again... Go ahead.
All planning testimony is reliant upon a foundation of other witnesses. If anything, any of the other witnesses says doesn't stand up, that impacts the planning conclusions here.
I appreciate that. I'm just trying to understand exactly what it is you're concluding and what you're relying on to make those conclusions.
I'm reliant upon a signed and sealed engineering document that says the stormwater design will be in accordance with all applicable regulations.
Okay, in your mind, from a planning perspective, that means it will decrease the flow rate from the property?
In my mind, that hits the statutory test that there will not be a substantially adverse impact from a stormwater management standpoint.
Are you aware that that's the standard under the stormwater management rules?
That the application, that a stormwater management plan has to be in accordance with NJDEP stormwater management rules, yes.
Right, I'm trying to garner your understanding of those rules because you're testifying about them, so I'm trying to understand what exactly it is you're testifying to. And it seems to me, I'll explain why I'm asking these questions. It seems to me that your testimony is invading into the space of the engineer, and yet when I ask you questions about them, you're not answering them directly. So I'm trying to figure out where the lines of your direct testimony actually are fair for the board to rely upon and where the board has to wait for the engineer, because I believe you said things that are outside the scope of a planner's purview.
I don't know if there was a question in there, but I have answered questions and made testimony within my purview.
But you're not... The intricacies of the stormwater management rules are not in your purview.
Planners deal with positive and negative criteria. One of the aspects of the negative criteria is the impact from a stormwater management standpoint. I have an engineering report that says that the plant will be designed in accordance with all applicable NJDEP regulations. Likewise, I have a design that is in accordance with all NJDEP regulations with respect to wetlands. Those are two key parts of the negative criteria that I'm relying upon.
Okay, if the engineer's report were not in complete compliance with the NJDEP regulations, would your testimony change?
Objection. Speculative.
He's an expert witness.
Witness can... Excuse me, a witness can answer the question?
I would have to hear or see what that non-conformance was.
Okay, and as a planner, would it be a detrimental impact if it were shown that there were a high likelihood or a high risk of flooding being created on neighboring residential properties from this site as a result of the...
Objection assumes facts not in the record.
Hypothetical for the expert witness.
Mr. Chairman, outside the record. Asking hypothetical questions, counsel, to the extent that you're trying to prove a point, if you have either direct testimony or reports or the like, you can show Mr. McDonough relative to that hypothetical, then the answer is you may ask it. If you're merely asking if A plus B equals C, that may or may not apply or be applicable depending on what's in the record.
Well, I'll clarify what I'm asking here, because I think this is an important question. I haven't yet gotten to speak to the engineer. I have not tried to ask him yet, and I guess I had to.
But you do have his report, do you not?
I have his report, that's correct. But we haven't had cross-examination. I haven't had my expert speak, so instead of having to...
Sorry, you're just speaking to the microphone and nothing can hear.
Sure. If I were to go through this whole process and not ask these questions about the foundation of this gentleman's testimony, and some of these facts were proven, we would have to recall this witness at a later date because his testimony changed significantly.
His behalf, not our behalf, his behalf. The point is, if you can prove that Mr. McDonough's testimony comes under a false pretense to other people's testimony, then it's up to Mr. O'Grady, top of the board, by the way, it's up to Mr. O'Grady to disprove the negative. So if he has to recall Mr. McDonough, he'll recall Mr. McDonough. If he doesn't think he has to, then he leaves his chances with the board based on what your testimony and your proof show versus his.
So is what I'm being told right now that I am not allowed to ask this witness whether or not he believes that the likelihood of flooding would be a substantial detriment from a planning standpoint?
You can ask him that question. He may or may not be able to answer it.
That's the question I'm asking.
I have no idea. I'm not a stormwater management expert. I have a report that's signed and sealed by an expert with his license on the line saying that, and that's uncontroverted expert opinion. I haven't seen a report to the contrary. I haven't seen a report to the contrary from a traffic standpoint. I'm looking at a plan that substantially complies with all of the zoning criteria, and I have expert reports that support the functionality of this design. That's pretty solid evidence from a planning standpoint.
Your testimony won't be provided, and I'll stop. I just, the question I want to be sure that you're not answering is, you cannot say whether flooding would be a substantial detriment from a planning standpoint?
I certainly can that it will not be a substantial detriment as a result of this design based on the technical evidence that's been provided by the expert who's qualified to do it.
So you're refusing to answer the hypothetical I'm presenting to you?
I can't. I can't go outside of my boundaries. I'm not an engineer. I can't say I reviewed his time of concentration calculations and...
I'm not going to let you do that because I'm not asking an engineering question. I'm asking you a planning question.
Ask the question. If I'm not answering it, please ask it, and I'll answer it the best I can, but I don't understand your question.
Is flooding a substantial detriment from a planning standpoint?
Yes, it's one of the fundamental purposes of zoning.
Thank you.
And this project won't cause that.
Well, you can't say that, so you keep, you can't keep doing this.
Certainly, certainly can.
Counsel, you're arguing with the witness.
I'm sorry. I appreciate that, but I did ask a question, and he answered it, and he previously told me he was relying on the engineer's report, and now he's telling me that he believes this will not cause flooding.
Based on the evidence on the record, I can't render a net opinion and say, yeah, this works just perfectly fine. But you're comfortable saying that it will cause flooding.
Counsel, you've asked the question at least three times, and Mr. McDonough's answer hasn't changed any. If you have testimony at some point along the way that will undercut Mr. McDonough's testimony, bring it to the board at the appropriate time, and then it'll be up to Mr. O'Grady to deal with it accordingly.
Okay, I'll move on. I want to talk about the trees, sir. You said that the tree removal waiver that is being sought is for an additional removal of nine trees. Is that correct?
Correct.
But that doesn't tell the whole story, does it? You are also seeking the economic hardship waiver, which reduces it to 1.5% of the overall cost of this site construction. Is that correct?
Correct. That's for the tree replacement, yes.
Okay. And how many trees are not being replaced as a result of that waiver?
I don't remember the number off the top of my head.
If I told you it was about 450, does that ring a bell to you?
I'll accept that.
Okay. And then, in addition to that, you're also seeking the off-site contribution where you're not actually planting the majority of those 450 trees. You're saying that 360 of those trees we cannot plant on this site, and we're going to pay money to plant them somewhere else. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Why can you not plant those 360 additional trees on the site?
I'll defer to the engineer. It's really a spatial question as to why you can't fit more trees on here, but from the planning standpoint, it's a design exception. This is not a variance now. We're not weighing the positives and the negatives. It's whether the request is reasonable and appropriate. As I said, the applicant is providing a nice green edge here that is going to provide a screening element and preserving the woodland around it, wrapping the entire site in green, giving it a nice soft edge, which from a planning standpoint is reasonable and appropriate and meets the Section 51 standard for a design exception.
Okay, I appreciate that, but reasonable and appropriate under the off-site contribution ordinance section is not a standard. The standard under that section is cannot replant. So the question I'm asking to you is, why can you not replant those trees?
It's a spatial question. I'll defer to the engineer.
Another thing you spoke to on your direct, sir, was the emergency vehicle roadway that I believe on the map up there is wrapping around the bottom right-hand corner of the building. Is that correct?
Yes.
Following your... Yes, yes, okay. Perfect. That's exactly what I thought it was. And can you remind me again what the singular purpose of that roadway is?
Emergency, for emergency vehicles.
Okay, is that road outside of the fall zone of a building collapse?
I don't know. I'm not an architect.
Okay. How high is the building?
38.4 feet.
So is the road then 38-point feet away from the top of the building?
Is the road 38.4 feet away? Again, it's a dimensional question. It looks like it's closer than that to me.
Okay, so if the building were to collapse, then it would obstruct that road?
I don't know that for a fact.
But you, can you tell me otherwise?
What if the building collapsed inward?
Okay, that's fair. If the building collapsed outward, would it obstruct the vehicles on that road?
Again, this is a request of the municipal fire department. We're following their request.
I understand that's not the question I'm asking you, sir.
I don't know. It's a hypothetical. I don't know. I don't know what happens if the building falls outward. I don't know. I would imagine they're not going to take a $100,000 fire truck and park it right up against a burning building.
I mean, I think that last point's irrelevant. It's about the passage of the vehicles.
You asked me what happens if the building collapses. They're not going to take the fire truck back there.
Would they be able to get it back there if the building collapsed before it got there?
I don't know.
Another point you brought up on your direct testimony, sir, was the sheer size of the site being quite large. Is that correct?
Yes, it's 9.2 acres in a two-acre zone.
So if I can ask you, with such a large site, why would you require so many variances that exceed out into those little buffers?
We don't require a lot of variances. We actually substantially conform with the ordinance here because of the size.
Well, okay, a lot is a subjective characterization, but you do require, I believe, three or four variances and seven or eight waivers, something like that?
Yes.
Okay, so on such a large site, wouldn't it be possible to build a completely conforming site?
It's a geometrical question. Spatially, sure. It's functionally, does it work? I don't know.
And building a smaller building and decreasing the buffers, would that decrease the impervious surface on the site?
Again, I don't know. Conceivably, yes. I don't know.
One of the specific variances I wanted to ask you about was the two driveway variance. What's the reason the applicant needs that variance?
That's a design question, and I'm going to defer to the design engineer. It's not a variance. It's a design exception.
So waiver?
Yes.
Okay, so are there practical difficulties and inherent that are creating the need to design that second driveway?
I'll defer to the design engineer as to the rationale for the design circulation system.
Okay, I don't want to get into it again. I just want to ask and have you tell me if you're going to answer. The second driveway creating additional impervious surface, you're relying on the engineer to tell us that's not creating exacerbating flooding issues?
That's what the report says.
And you're relying on the engineers. It's it to make that connection.
I have to.
Bear with me a second. We've got stuff on the table here, so.
Take space, take it away.
I have one more question maybe to follow up. Section 1838, which requires a waiver from, I believe, requires everywhere buffers entrenched upon, the more effective the buffer must be, it obscures light vision and producing noise beyond the lot as well as for protection of the environment in sensitive areas. What have you done to the buffer area to comply with that provision?
The applicant has provided a double row of evergreens to attenuate visual impact and again, there are no active uses within that 100-foot buffer but for provision of an emergency service access road.
What about the environmentally sensitive areas requirement of that provision? Have you done anything to meet that requirement?
We're not violating that requirement.
Well, the requirement says that it must be more effective because it's closer to the border and protecting environmentally sensitive areas. So I'm asking you, how is your buffer more effective because you've made it closer?
Again, we've preserved the hardwood, the deciduous mature trees along the perimeter of the property and we've supplemented the buffer to make it more effective than it presently is. It's both an environmental and a visual benefit.
How is that an environmental benefit?
Well, when you provide evergreens into a landscape, not only do they provide a visual separation as well, but they do better attenuate dust, particles in the air and the like, and that's an environmental benefit.
What's currently there where the evergreens are going to be planted?
Open woods.
So the planted evergreens, you're telling me, is going to have a greater environmental protection aspect than the current natural woods?
Evergreens are the workhorses of the landscape. They'll filter out things in the air that deciduous trees won't.
Okay, but we've been through this before, sir. You're not an engineer, so you really can't tell me that.
I'm a licensed landscape architect.
But you're not an engineer.
I'm a licensed landscape architect. I think I'm more qualified than an engineer to talk about plants.
But I'm asking about environmental protections. I'm not asking about what, you're talking about the aesthetic aspects of this.
And the environmental aspects. I don't know what part of the question I haven't answered.
Okay, I'll leave it at that. I think the board's very aware of what part you have answers. That's all I have.
Just two quick questions, Mr. McDonough. Isn't it correct that the emergency access is not required by the ordinance?
Correct.
And isn't it correct that the board or the applicant could propose to eliminate the emergency access contrary to the fire official, which would in turn eliminate the variance?
Correct.
And isn't it correct that the applicant eliminate the tree removal variance by reducing it to under 60%, which would again be contrary to the environmental commission recommendations? Am I correct?
Correct. There's a spirit of cooperation with the environmental recommendations, environmental commission recommendations.
Thank you. No further questions.
Okay.
Before the public.
Okay. I've been requested we're going to do another five-minute recess. It's about 9:30. We'll reconvene at 9:35.
Hillsborough, New Jersey, celebrating 250 years of a rich history.
Hi, I'm Mayor Sean LaPony and I'm proud to showcase Hillsborough, one of the best places to live in America.
From the preserved farms that help feed the world, to the Van Devere House, to the John R. Stott's House restored and currently utilized for business, to the magnificent and world-famous Duke Farms-
Where you can walk or ride a bike through their historic grounds. To the iconic Nechannick Reformed Church and just down the road is our fabulous Nechannick Mill located right on the picturesque Rowerton River.
You're invited to visit Hillsborough, a great place to live, work, play, and do business anytime, and experience over 250 years of proud history in Hillsborough, New Jersey.
Good morning and welcome to the opening of the Peter J. Biondi Route 206 bypass here in Hillsborough Township. Thank you for joining us here today for this very much anticipated event here. Can't think of one that we've been waiting for longer. As we open the remaining sections of this vital roadway which has been named in memory of the late Assemblyman Peter J. Biondi. This roadway will officially open for traffic on Saturday, June 5th. I'm joined here today by my colleagues, the Hillsborough Township Committee, Deputy Mayor Frank Delkor, Committeeman Doug Thompson, Committeewoman Janine Erickson, and Committeeman Jeffrey Wright. I would also like to thank this opportunity to introduce some other guests here this morning. Senator Kip Bateman, who was a sponsor of the legislation to actually get this name, this road named after the late Assemblyman Biondi, and thank you for that. Assemblyman Roy Fryman, Commissioner Paul Drake, and please help me welcome Ms. Joan Biondi. Thank you for being here today on this historic day for Hillsborough Township. The late Assemblyman Peter J. Biondi was a pillar in our community for over 35 years. As a result of time serving the community as a member of the township committee, mayor, freeholder, and assemblyman, he was often referred to as Mr. Hillsborough. During his entire tenure in public life, he remained committed to the betterment of Hillsborough. His tireless dedication and support of Hillsborough was unwavering, hence why in 2013, this roadway was officially named after Peter J. Biondi. The bypass is a vital part of Hillsborough's economic development. Not only will it bypass lessen congestion and traffic along the existing 206, but it will also serve as the impetus for a future town center that is envisioned in our township master plan. This long-awaited and much-anticipated vision is now a reality. Originally considered in the early 1970s as the Hillsborough Township began to develop, unfortunately it remained only a concept until the early 2000s. In August 2010, township local and state officials broke ground to officially start the construction of the bypass at midsection, similar to where we're standing right now. We thank past and current state administrators for their diligence in seeing this project through. This portion will shift traffic on the new 3.6-mile section of US 206 to the east of the existing highway between Mountain View Road and Old Somerville Road, creating the opportunity for further development of the town center along the current 206. The project limits are from Mountain View Road to Hillsborough Road on the southern end and from Animal Road, Somersdale County Route 514, to Old Somerville Road on the northern end. To the north, the widening will work, will continue until the final phase is complete. We have looked forward to this day and we now look forward to the development of our downtown Hillsborough Main Street vision. Please stay tuned as we continue to grow and improve and remain as one of the best places to live and work in America. Again, thank you all for being here this morning. We will now have the official ribbon cutting and that will conclude our ceremony. And again, thank you to our honored guests who are here today and Ms. Joan Biondi, and thank you very much. One, two, three.
Hillsborough, New Jersey, celebrating 250 years of a rich history.
Hi, I'm Mayor Sean LaPony and I'm proud to showcase Hillsborough, one of the best places to live in America.
From the preserved farms that help feed the world, to the Van Devere House, to the John R. Stott's House restored and currently utilized for business, to the magnificent and world-famous Duke Farms-
Where you can walk or ride a bike through their historic grounds. To the iconic Nechannick Reformed Church and just down the road is our fabulous Nechannick Mill located right on the picturesque Rowerton River.
You're invited to visit Hillsborough, a great place to live, work, play, and do business anytime, and experience over 250 years of proud history in Hillsborough, New Jersey. Hillsborough, New Jersey, celebrating 250 years of a rich history.
Hi, I'm Mayor Sean LaPony and I'm proud to showcase Hillsborough, one of the best places to live in America.
From the preserved farms that help feed the world, to the Van Devere House, to the John R. Stott's House restored and currently utilized for business, to the magnificent and world-famous Duke Farms-
Where you can walk or ride a bike through their historic grounds. To the iconic Nechannick Reformed Church and just down the road is our fabulous Nechannick Mill located right on the picturesque Rowerton River.
You're invited to visit Hillsborough, a great place to live, work, play, and do business anytime, and experience over 250 years of proud history in Hillsborough.
Mr. Chairman? Did we see you?
Oh, there he is. Okay. Okay, we're back. I think where we left off. You still have more questions?
I have one more question for this person.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. McDonough, you said earlier you didn't submit a report. I just ask you, have you ever visited this site?
Yes.
You have?
Yes.
How many times?
Once or twice.
For how long?
Hour.
That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Eric, just real quick, what's, how late do we typically go?
We will usually stop taking testimony, new testimony after 10 o'clock. Usually with that point, we'll go to 10:30 if you feel there's ongoing questions relative to testimony previously granted, but that's up to the board to decide whether they want to extend from 10 to 10:30.
Okay, but we have a hard stop at 11?
We have actually a hard stop at 10:30.
10:30? Okay.
I don't have the biological in front of me, but okay.
Can we just motion that?
You can if you want. Say it or whatever.
I make a motion.
I make a motion. We go till testimony till 10:30 and then if we have to, 11 at the worst. We've had to take a couple breaks, so let's try to get through as much of this as we can.
All right. So no new testimony after 10:30, but continue till 11?
That's my motion.
I second that.
Can I just do a-
On favor.
On favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Save this section and leave from the membership.
Okay. Okay, we have it open to the public. If anyone from the public would like to ask questions on the testimony of this witness, please come up, state your name, spelling your last name, and address for the record, please.
Christine Copan, Seven Magdalene.
Ms. Reuben, are you a member of your nonprofit organization that's being represented by council?
I am not.
Thank you.
So I just have a couple of questions for you on your testimony.
Can you just hit the mic?
Oops, sorry about that. Couple of questions for your testimony. So when you were planning, what impact analysis's were done to affect your plan?
Well, there's a couple of things that goes into a planning analysis. We always have to consider the project positives and I ran through them for the board.
I've got some questions.
Okay. And then I have to go through the negatives and the negatives are, I'll say, the obvious. Traffic, environmental impact, stormwater impact. We have a series of reports that specifically address them that conclude that there will not be a substantially adverse impact from an environmental standpoint, from a traffic standpoint, from a stormwater standpoint. Those are three key aspects of the negative criteria. And then we apply a balancing of the pros and cons.
Okay. So was any impact on wildlife specifically?
That would be part of an environmental analysis and again, we know that we're dealing with a vegetated forest, but the conclusion is that the environmental impact will not be substantially adverse here.
Okay. Was any type of impact on sound to these neighborhoods based on clearing all of these trees and what would be coming from the adjacent highways?
Well, what's nice about the way this plan was laid out, okay, good, and the, yes, as part of the impact assessment there, there was the, I think I just skipped the name of the Environmental Associates Inc. report that was submitted, that it did include sound considerations, but just to point out the obvious, I'll put it to that screen up there, we have a building mass, it's an enclosed space. The building becomes the buffer here. Building blocks the active space, which is the parking area, the loading area. And what I like about this application is that the applicant is putting the paved areas in front of the building, not behind the building where the impact in my view would be greater from a sound and visual impact.
Actually, on the visual impact, you stated that you don't think this would have a substantial visual impact to the surrounding neighborhood?
Right.
Okay, so my property is the lower right-hand corner, right off-
Is that this one right there?
Yes.
To the right?
That is my property. I can see the current structure in the back from my property in the evenings. Now, with that said, you just told me this building blocks all of the sound from the highway. Will I be able to see that building from my property?
Well, if you're seeing the, if you, you're talking about the proposed building or what you see now?
The proposed building.
Okay. So the applicant is proposing evergreens and we can certainly work with the board professionals to look at augmenting that. I could say I'm a landscape architect, so there may be an opportunity to create more here. I have not done the landscape design here. I've viewed it, it looks effective, but it could be a second look considering your line of sight. We don't have an uncooperative applicant here. I'm sure the applicant wants to be a good neighbor and we'll do what we can, but again, there is a significant offset here. Maybe we can get some more evergreens in there. We'll take a look at it.
So the evergreens you're proposing, I think, may have been stated around 6 feet?
Believe it's 6 to 8 feet, but I'm going to defer to the engineer in that regard.
But we're definitely looking somewhere below 12 feet. Roughly speaking?
Yes.
Do you agree to that?
Yes.
What is the height of the current trees in that area?
Typical forested area is 60 to 80 feet.
And line of sight would still be appropriate, that you feel these trees are not going to visually affect the neighborhood. You are stating that six-foot or 12-foot, two rows is going to replace that entire wooded area and there's going to be no visual impact to our neighborhood?
There's a few parts to that, to answer that question. As part of a visual impact analysis, we have to consider what's allowed under the zone scheme. Again, the applicant is asking for 3.4-foot height belief above that which is required. So a 35-foot-high building could go here. Applicant's asking for 38.4. The delta is not significant in my view from a visual impact standpoint. The delta is not significant, in my view, from a visual impact standpoint. That's the vertical. As I said before, the box, the box is something that the zone plan says is okay, so considering visual impact, I have to consider that the zone plan says, I can put a building half this size and still have the line of the building right there, right where this building line is going. Just because something can be seen does not mean that it has a negative visual impact. I'm not aware of any case law that says visibility is a reason for denial of an application. Visual impact is, but we do have mitigating measures here between your house, which looks like it's in a really nice location, and the subject building. You do have more than 100 feet of separation, so you've got vertical separation.
Well, from my property line.
From your property line. You have 100 feet of separation, and then you have, your house is offset from there as well, so I'm guessing kitchen window or whatever at the back. And then you have mature forest, which I know you can see through, it does provide for some, I'll say saturation, trees even without leaves do have some obscurity to them. And then we're going to soften the base of this building with evergreens that will grow up over time. Will you see it in the beginning? Sure you will. Do I think, will there be a visibility impact? Yes. Will it be a substantially negative visual impact? In my opinion, given all of those factors, the answer is no.
Given that we don't know who the tenant is going to be, what are the operating hours of something like this built to spec? Out of curiosity. Would there be lighting put in place, things of that nature, for after-hours?
It's an engineering and architectural question, but again, any lights are associated with the front of the building, not the reverse, putting the parking in the back, which would have a greater visual impact.
Would have a greater visual impact?
Because the parking lot would be closer to your home.
But there is still going to be some form of lighting on the back of the building?
I'm going to defer to our architect on that. I think there may have to be some sort of security lighting, as there would for any building, but I have to defer to the architect in that regard.
Any impact on what that would do at night, or maybe, I don't know, somebody who does astronomy?
Well, the.
Light pollution?
The application is not asking for any relief related to the illumination that's being cast from this site. I believe it would be dark sky compliant, the lights are downward directional here, and probably getting out of my bounds, I should defer to the engineer, because I'm going to get an elbow soon.
All right. Well, I guess my point is, you've continued to state that your design, your plan, is not going to substantially impact the neighborhood. I've heard a couple things that may impact visual, may have other impacts. So, you also had mentioned another impact that you would consider was the economy. The financial, you'd say that the financial gains would be good for this community?
The answer is yes. This is an economic development zone. If you look at the zoning, the industrial zone is right against your property. That's where it is. So, yes, this is a zone that's targeted at economic development.
Okay. So, you consider this obviously part of your plan. Were any of the cons considered for those of us who may be adjacent to it, and what that would do to our property values?
I'm not a real estate expert.
But it wasn't considered as part of your plan?
Again, it's a permitted use in the zone that is substantially in conformance with all of the bulk requirements of the build-out that the zone plan contemplates.
So, it was not part of your plan?
I would offer that that has been considered, real estate impacts have been considered as part of the zoning. It sounds to me like your concern is more with the zone than the plan itself, because this plan is in accordance with the zone.
Okay. It's a much, it's a very, very large building.
It's change. I get it. Totally get it. It's change, but we have to be fair to our applicant, too.
Your testimony doesn't have to deal with my change. I'm asking questions, I'm sorry. I just don't want you to talk down to me.
I'm sorry if I'm coming off that way.
Okay. So, there are questions I do have for you. You had stated that this would be in standard with any runoff standards. I'm sorry. Any of the water or runoffs that you put in this design would meet and meet current runoff standards?
From a practical standpoint.
From a practical?
From a practical standpoint, the flows to your property can't, cannot increase as part of the design. There cannot be more water directed onto your property. I'm oversimplifying, there's a much more technical answer for that, but that's the practical answer.
I'm sorry, to the extent you're going to start answering questions again about the runoff, you refuse to answer the questions that I'm going to ask, so if you're going to keep talking, I don't think I'm going to ask my questions again.
Mr. McDonough, would you please answer the question to your personal and professional knowledge?
Is there still an open question that I haven't answered?
Will it meet the standards? It will?
Yes. To my, yes, I have not heard anything to the contrary.
Okay. Part of your analysis, was that for the current water management standards, or any type of analysis that's going to be considered for changes in climate? I think everybody who has a property near this location can say, as of, you know, a month and a half ago, we saw that runoff can have an effect. It covered some of our homes, so I guess my question to you would be, is that part of your plan? Are you considering what this could be in the future?
The plan is designed in accordance with the rules that are in effect right now.
Right now. So, projections were not considered as a con or a pro in your plan?
I don't know specifically what the rules do or don't contemplate. I, future I don't, there may be a.
I'm not saying what the rules are. Did you consider part of your planning the future, or present, or future conditions for the water runoff? Was it a factor in your planning?
I don't, I don't know how to answer that question. I'm so, I'm sorry. I don't know how to answer it.
Okay. So, if the current standards were increased, would that impact the design of your building?
Are you asking me if the current rules were made more stringent, more strict, would that, would this design fail? Am I answering, am I understanding the question? I don't know that answer. I don't know. I don't know. I just don't know.
Okay. And so, you're not sure, and it wasn't considered?
Because I don't know what those rules are. I don't, if more stringent rules, I don't know if this applicant could or couldn't hit them.
So, there's a variance being requested for the fire lane, which I understand was at the request of the fire department here. With that variance, if, I don't know, let's say the fire lane needs to move further away from the building, would you use that variance to continue to cut into the buffer zone, or would you make the building smaller?
I think there are two options here. We keep the fire lane where it is right now at the request of the fire department, or if the board were not to grant that relief, the fire lane would go away. Those are the two options.
But the preference would be to continue to move into the buffer using that variance?
No. That's not, that's not, that's not option three at all.
So, if the fire lane needs additional space, which way does it go?
Oh, if you're going, I think you're going back to the fall zone question, to move that fire lane further away from the building? Geometrically, yes, but that's not any option on the table right now.
Maybe I'm misunderstanding them. So, we are assuming the fire lane is accurate, but should that fire lane need to be modified in any way, would you use the current buffer to make up that difference?
I don't know if that, if you're asking me a factual question. I don't know if the applicant would do it or not, but factually, would the, would the fire lane have to move further into the buffer to be further away from the building? The answer is, is yes.
Okay. So, as the planner, that would be your recommendation, is to continue to cut further into the buffer for your plan?
That's, that's not my answer. My answer is to leave it where it is, because nobody is saying it's a problem where it is.
And if changes were needed?
It's a hypothetical. I, I don't.
I can respect that, absolutely. I guess the only other question I do have for you is, I heard you reference the cutting-edge system. And I understand that you've done analysis, and you've already heard me raise the question of what could, could impact this neighborhood. I'm very curious, as a planner, if you would still recommend this building and recommend this design in this location, knowing what happened to the homes two months ago?
Those regulations are in effect for you. For me, from the stewards of stormwater management protection, that's all we can go by. I'm not going to question whether those rules were good, or bad, or wrong, or right to this area. That's, that's what we have to design to, and I think our applicant has done a good job designing to very well-thought-out rules.
But we need variances?
But you need variances, yes. The applicant is asking for relief to effectuate those positives that I talked about. An applicant's allowed to ask for relief, and we weigh the impacts in that.
But you haven't weighed all of the impacts, you've weighed some of the impacts.
That sounds like a statement to me.
It's a question. Did you review all of the impacts that could be affected here, or did you review some of them?
I conducted a standard planning analysis in accord, not trying to talk you down. I conducted a standing, standard planning analysis in accordance with the criteria that the statute says we have to hit.
Okay. So, then when you say it doesn't have a significant impact, what you're saying is it doesn't have, it doesn't meet a higher level of significant impact than what the current standards? I'm a little confused, when you say that you, you had, and you're following all of the standards, but you need a variance to meet those standards. And that's, that's why I don't understand how this property is still, how your statement that this property will not affect or impact significantly the area around it, without considering additional impacts perhaps that above the minimum. The question there is, would you go further to not affect the neighborhood in the way you're planning, if additional impacts were found?
The case is not over. It's a hypothetical.
Yes.
And I'll reserve the right to come back if I hear something during the course of the testimony that I feel I need to come back, and council wants me to come back. But based on the application that's been submitted and everything that I've heard about this application, I'm satisfied that the criteria are met.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate you answering my questions.
Yep. Any additional members from the public that would like to question this witness
Maria Janus, 6/7/20, East Freck Avenue, Manville, New Jersey. I believe one of your first statements was that this is, this project is going to make runoff conditions better?
Yes.
Was that a statement you made? And what do you base your statement on?
The stormwater management report.
Okay. So, are you qualified then to say that, or should that be something that, that the, whoever, whoever composed that report should make that statement?
Okay. I think I've been asked that question already by council, but my answer is the same. I'm reliant upon an expert, which a planner is completely entitled to do.
Okay. I understand that you rely on that, but are you qualified to make that statement?
Yes.
Attorney Bernstein, is that correct? Because I've been at these, some of these meetings where I made a statement and you said, well, you're not an expert witness. Can this person?
Because you're not.
Can this person, excuse me, can this person make the statement that this project will make runoff conditions better?
He answered the question, ma'am, in the context of his professional license as a professional planner.
Okay. Then should he qualify, should he qualify his statement with, based on what I have read or whatever?
I believe, I believe he's done that already. On multiple occasions, when questioned by Mr. R., relative to that issue.
And he just, literally just answered that to you in your, in your question?
Yeah. He said, he said he is, he said he is qualified to make that statement.
Yep.
Okay. All right. In regard to the buffer, that buffer that's going to be used as a fire lane, that buffer, that's a buffer for what? Is that an environmental buffer, or is that a buffer from the residential area?
It is a, it is a separation between residential and non-residential.
So, at some point, that buffer is close to one of the, one of the adjoining properties, is that block 58, lot 1.08?
Well, the buffer is 100 feet wide, which is what the buffer requirement is supposed to be. The applicant is putting a grass path, grass is permitted to be within that 100-foot buffer. The applicant is asking the board to move on relief to allow an emergency vehicle to go over that grass surface. That's the nature of the relief.
And that's acceptable to the, to the, to Mr. Weniger? That's the fire, fire chief, I believe?
That's the request of the fire department, yes. I don't know the specific individual.
Okay. So, so this buffer is what, grass?
Well, the buffer is, the buffer is substantially wooded, but there is a path for emergency vehicles that will be grass.
Okay. So, that, so will that grass ground, that ground that's only grass, will that be able to withstand the weight of the, of the, of any kind of fire apparatus?
I'm going to answer it in a general term. The answer is yes. The specifics of how that grass path will be armored, I'll say, I'm going to defer to our engineer. But there are, there are materials that grass can grow up that can also carry the load of a vehicle.
Okay. In regard to the variances, so there's a, there's a, no, not variances, waiver, there's a waiver request, and this is in regard to the access driveway for parking and loading, and this is a waiver request of 10 feet from the property line of block 58, lot 1.08?
Yes, that's one of the design exceptions.
So, so 10 feet are being requested when 30 feet are required?
That's correct.
How close, how close are these two lots to one another, that you only have 10 feet versus the required 30 feet?
I don't know what you mean by how close are these, they touch each other?
Why, why can't you have 30 feet as required, rather than having to have 10 feet of, of space between the properties?
I'm going to let the design engineer talk about the design rationale, but it's to effectuate safe and efficient circulation around the site, and provide a reasonably appropriate edge, green edge.
Is there anything on that, on block, block 58, lot 1.08 right now?
Let me just get my little, just need to get the identification of the man. Oh, yeah. Okay. So, 1.08 is, I'm going back to A1, is that white building that you see in the upper-left-hand corner, and the 10-foot edge is what separates the two parking areas.
What is that white building? What is that?
It's an industrial flex building.
It's an industrial building? Okay. Do you have to get permission from the owner of that, or is it the same owner? Who owns that property? Do you have to get permission from the owner of that property to have this 10 feet versus 30 feet?
No. And maybe I'm overstepping my bounds, but to my understanding, that is the seller. That property owner also owns the subject lot. So, it's in effect.
Both properties are owned by the same owner?
Yes. And as the owner of the properties, the owner is implied consenting to that 10-foot separation.
Okay. So, the owner will continue to own block 58, lot 1.08. He's selling lot 1.09.
I don't know the ultimate disposition of 58.01, but I would assume that that's correct.
Okay. Now, waiver four requests, is a request providing, for providing more than one access driveway. Two are proposed for a site with less than 500 feet of frontage. How much frontage does this lot have?
Well, it has minimal frontage, because it's at the end of a cul-de-sac.
What would be minimal?
50 feet. Whatever the width of that cul-de-sac is, that roadway is.
Wow. So, so in order for a property to have two access driveways, it would have to have 500 feet of frontage?
Which is a practical difficulty for any use of this.
But is that, is that, yes or no?
Yes.
Okay. So, it only has 50 feet? So it only has 50 feet and yet you're looking to put two access driveways on this property?
Yes.
Okay. The, in regard to the detention basin, there currently is a detention basin on this property?
There is a graded area, yes. Graded depression that serves a detention function, yes.
A graded depression area?
That's this light green area.
Okay. So when was that initially built, that detention basin?
I don't know.
Okay. And you say that the area was previously disturbed. How much area was previously disturbed?
I don't know.
Okay, as far as the trees, you mentioned that relief is requested for nine trees?
That's the delta between the 60% allowance and what's proposed. That's 61.35%.
Nine, all right, nine trees. I don't know where that comes in. Let's see, from Van Cleef Engineering, there's the economic hardship waiver request. And it says here, the landscape plan has specified the species and location of 93 replacement trees. And the applicant will provide a contribution to the Hillsborough Parks Department for the remainder of the replacement trees, 359 trees. So where does the nine come in? Or this is saying that there could be 93 replacement trees?
Oh, one is, yeah, one is a design exception for tree replacement. That's the 450 trees or so that you were just speaking about and the 93 being provided, the rest being a contribution to the fund. The other, the variance, is for the tree removal of more than 60%. And the applicant is asking the board to move on 61.35%. In terms of absolute numbers, that's a delta of nine trees. Nine more trees are being removed than what's allowed.
So is that something also that should be considered separately? When you have requests here either for variance or, not for variance, but for a waiver?
The tree removal is a variance. The tree replacement is a design exception. And it's subtle differences for the board. But with variances, we apply the balancing. With design exceptions, we just look at a standard of reasonableness. And the board can treat the variances and the relief any way they want. They could take it all as one bundle or they can sever them and take them one by one.
So how many trees actually are going to be removed? Let's see here.
I'll defer to the engineer for the specifics.
So what impact does it have on stormwater when that many trees are cut down?
I don't think it has any impact on stormwater when that many trees are taken down.
So trees have no relevance when you have rainfall and anchoring the soil and all that kind of stuff? Does it matter whether you have trees or not?
The trees will, the replacement of vegetated areas with impervious cover will change aspects of the stormwater calculations, yes. Time of concentration, runoff rates, those type of things.
So that has an impact? How many trees are there has an impact?
It does have an impact, yes.
Okay. So now you're saying that there won't be, let's see, it's going to make runoff conditions better on this property. Will water be diverted somewhere else where it's going to create problems somewhere else? Yet I was at an environmental meeting the other day and same thing was said, that this is going to be good, you know, for this location. There won't be extra problems. But then it was stated, it's going to be diverted in a different direction. And people got up and said, well, that's my property, it's going to get flooded. Is this going to be diverted somewhere else? It's going to create problems somewhere else?
These are good questions. And they are engineering, for sure.
Okay. The detention basin that's currently there, is that going to be enlarged?
Yes. I'll let the engineer specify it.
Okay. You made a comment that there's strict compliance with the zoning ordinance as far as the I-3 light industrial zone. I don't remember what it was that you specifically said about that strict compliance. What is it strictly complying to?
Well, I'll let the record speak for itself. I already put that testimony on. But to respond to your question, the use, the bulk requirements all comply, but for that 3.4-foot height beliefs that the applicant is seeking.
Okay, well, so that was a variance, the height thing. But there were four variances requested for this application. The proposed fire lane. Now, if that buffer were not to be used for the fire apparatus, would the fire apparatus be able to get in any other way other than if they had to use that buffer?
I don't know. It's a design question. I don't know that it's a zoning requirement, that there'd be full access for an emergency vehicle around the building. If that lane goes away, there's no relief that's needed. This is a response to a request of the fire department.
Well, I would think, wow, that's very important.
In the interest of enhanced safety, for sure. It triggers relief.
So this application doesn't require access for a fire apparatus?
Full access around the building is not, that I'm aware of, a requirement of the zoning ordinance, no.
Okay. Why is there this request for two driveways on a property that doesn't have 500 feet? What is the purpose of that?
I'll defer to the engineer for the design specific. But from a planning standpoint, you're separating cars and trucks.
Okay, I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Tom Sulich, 161 Johansen Avenue. And I'm not part of that party, just before you ask. Couple of questions. First of all, it's the first time I'm seeing this drawing. To me, it's very disturbing. I can't believe that the township allows industrial this close to houses. But that's neat to hear and there. Question for you. Yeah, sorry. That was just a comment, so that wasn't directed here. Question I have is, the light green on the right side, that's the current retention basin? That's going to be expanded?
Yes, the, I'll say the kidney-shaped, light green, yes.
Okay. That gray area on top, that is for trucks right next to the retention basin?
Yes, that you have your loading berths right up against the building. And then you have some spaces for truck parking.
And how many truck spaces are planned?
I'm going to ask you to wait for the engineer for all of that. He'll go through every one of these details for you.
Question for you on this. Being that there's only 100-feet buffer on that and we have the truck parking back here, I can already, I'm down in that corner. I can already hear the noise from 206. So what's the noise level going to be like for us? What's our, what's our condition of, what's our lifestyle going to be like once those trucks start rolling in? It's only 100 feet. 100 feet is probably from here to that flag. That's nothing. So we're going to hear that sound. So what is the ordinance for the township to compensate for that? Why the truck berths over there and not along 206 as opposed to back in that one?
Well, if I could, when you said you're in the corner, are you this house?
No, we're back over in that, the top corner right.
Upper right, so that'd be the northeast. I don't know that I see your house here. I don't know how far away your house is from the property line. But again, whatever we plan, whatever we zone, a zone line is pencil thin. It's a line. The way we soften the impact between two different land uses, residential and non-residential uses, is to create a soft edge. And the applicant has respected that. The applicant's meeting the edge requirements of the ordinance except for the emergency access. That's the only nonperformance, which could go away if the board wanted it to.
Okay, so would it be possible to move those truck berths, if this got built, over to 206? So it's not back near the neighborhoods? So that top part of 206 near that cul-de-sac or circle coming in on the left side?
The short answer is no.
Why not?
Well, it's a design question. We'll have to fall back to the engineer. This all connects together the way this has been designed. But from a planning standpoint, not only do we have the 100-foot buffer, honestly, I can't see your house on this exhibit. So it looks like your house is another 100 feet away from that.
It's not that far away. But anyway, my house is a little further than other people that are right in that corner. So I see the plan is, you can redirect the plan to put that truck berth over on 206 as opposed to back there.
Is that a question, sir, or is that an opinion?
That's a comment, so I'll withdraw that. So also, I guess you're now to comment on this for the trucks. How many berths do we have? Oh, you said you didn't know, sorry. And if there's any questions on the traffic, that would go to the engineer too?
We have a separate traffic engineer.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, any other questions I have for the engineer? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to question this witness? I don't see any more. Board members?
10:30 will be the last new witness. So we're about 15 minutes away and we'll continue till 11:00.
If Ms. Dolan is finished with her testimony by 10:30.
Right. If she's finished.
I'm sure Ms. Dolan is finished by 10:30.
Before I ask this question, do you think that's going to be the truth to all truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do. Elizabeth Dolan, D-O-L-A-N. Dolan &amp; Dean Consulting Engineers, 181 West High Street in Somerville, New Jersey.
Could you give the board benefit of your educational experience and your current licenses?
Yes, I have a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from Rutgers. I am a licensed professional engineer registered in New Jersey, New York, Pennsylvania, and Delaware. A member of the Institute of Transportation Engineers. And for 35 years, I've focused in the area of traffic and transportation engineering. I've testified in over 250 municipalities throughout New Jersey. I've been here in Hillsboro. I think I was last here virtually for a site just up the road on 206. But in all cases, I have been accepted as an expert in traffic engineering.
Would like to submit Ms. Dolan is an expert in the area of traffic engineering?
Any objections? Here and there, we accept. Please continue.
Did you complete a traffic impact statement dated March 22nd, 2021?
Yes, we did.
Could you go over your findings?
Yes. The board and the attendees are certainly familiar now with the proposal. It's 107,366 square foot warehouse off of Campus Drive and Harvard. The purpose of the traffic statement was to identify the peak hour trip generation associated with this land use. Traffic engineers focus on the peak hours for this type of land use traditionally, weekday mornings sometime between 7:00 and 9:00 in the morning, weekday evenings between 4:00 and 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock. And those are the times when trip generation is typically highest and coincident with peak volumes on the highway. For estimating the activity, we reference the Trip Generation Manual by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. And Table 1 of our report summarizes the expected peak hour activity. In the morning, 29 entering vehicles, nine exiting for a total of 38 trips during the busiest hour in the morning on a weekday. The reverse, in the evening peak hour with only 11 entering, 30 exiting for a total of 41. So 38 to 41 peak hour trips is not considered significant. That is actually defined by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. And it's also noted in our State Highway Access Management Code. At 100 or more peak hour trips, we consider that to be significant and worthy of a formal analysis. In fact, the DOT requires that if we introduce 100 or more trips to an intersection in one hour, we're required to count and analyze that intersection. We won't be generating that type of activity. We'll be well below that during the peak hours. And the site will be served via an existing roadway with a right-in, right-out configuration on northbound Route 206. It's a nominal amount of traffic and can be accommodated onto and off of the state highway. Again, it's roughly one to two trips, or I'm sorry, one trip every one to two minutes. So this is not considered significant. And during all other hours of the day, the activity generated by this warehouse will be less than those 38 and 41 that we're estimating for the peak hours. Mr. Ford's going to take you through the site plan in detail. But we did do a brief review and commented on the access and circulation. From my perspective, the two access points make sense. We're on a dead end. We're not creating traffic conflict points. We're going to have a driveway that'll primarily accommodate the passenger vehicles. That would be on the westerly side or just south of the cul-de-sac bulb. And then the northerly driveway would be specifically for trucks. So I think that it's an appropriate design. Typically, the concern about multiple access points is having conflict points. But this is a dead end. And so the only traffic using those two driveways will be the site driveways. And I believe we need relief from the 9x18 parking stalls. And the aisle width we're proposing is 24 where 30 is required or perhaps 25. So the 9x18 with a 24-foot aisle is the accepted design standard. And ITE recommends that for higher turnover, this will be a low-turnover parking configuration. And the parking supply that is proposed is consistent with industry standards.
Have you had an opportunity to review the November 15, 2021, Pinoni Associates Engineering Report?
Yes.
Specifically with respect to the traffic conclusions reached on page five?
Yeah, I got the wrong letter. Thanks. Right. On page five, under traffic, there's two comments. And then the conclusion is, based on the proposed site's trip generation, we concur with the conclusion that new trips generated by the proposed site will not significantly impact the adjacent roadway network and that the site driveway is expected to operate in a safe and efficient manner during the identified peak periods. End quote.
I have no further questions for the witness.
No, go ahead. We've got 35 minutes.
Sticking on that last point there about the November 15, Ford says, number two under traffic on that Pinoni report, says the applicant's traffic engineer sheltered my testimony regarding the anticipated tenant operation of the site and the impact on the surrounding roadway network. Have you provided any testimony as to the anticipated tenant?
No, I have not.
Not knowing the anticipated tenant or the operation of the site, how are you able to conduct your analysis?
The Institute of Transportation Engineers provides guidance in the Trip Generation Manual. And that was the specific purpose of the use of the manual is to estimate the type of activity that would be generated by this warehouse. It's very similar to a shopping center with multi-tenant spaces. We don't know the tenants in the beginning of the design and application process. So ITE provides a generic shopping center definition. And that encompasses unknown tenant users. So the warehousing category that ITE provides similarly, provides rates to estimate what might be expected based on the size and type of the building, in this case, a warehouse.
You just spoke of the shopping center analysis. I'm just correcting if I'm wrong. I'm assuming there's a separate warehouse analysis that you conducted.
I testified that we estimated trips based on the ITE warehouse land use category. based on the ITE warehouse land use category.
Is there any specific type of tenant that might change your analysis?
Not based on the size and type of building that's proposed.
You spoke about the access and circulation at the site. How does the added driveway impact your analysis, if at all?
Well, I performed a review. It's not an analysis. I reviewed the site plan with regard to site access and circulation. As I stated, there are two driveways, one that is designed specifically to accommodate trucks, and the other will accommodate access to the standard parking stalls for passenger vehicles.
If there were just one driveway, would that change your analysis?
Again, there's no analysis. It's a review of the plan that's before the board.
Okay, so you make no opinion then as to the need for that second driveway?
I believe I did say in my direct testimony that I think that it's a good design because it provides separation for cars and trucks. And I also don't see any problem with it because the cul-de-sac bulb is serving access to the site. So it's no different than if the cul-de-sac bulb weren't provided and we came into the site and divided the roadway in two. It just happens to be we provided the turnaround because it is a dead-end roadway. We don't want traffic that's not associated with this site coming into the site. So you provide the bulb for the turnaround.
Okay, so then I understand you saying that there is a need for this second driveway, in your opinion?
Yes, that's the way the site's been designed, and it provides distinct access for the truck port in particular.
Would there be a hardship if that waiver weren't granted?
I think it all just simply goes to the site layout. I think it's simply the way the site's been designed, and it makes sense from a design and circulation perspective.
Okay, it makes sense from a traffic perspective. But just to be sure, you make no opinion as to whether it makes sense as to impervious coverage, impervious coverage space?
That's for Mr. Ford to testify to.
The planner earlier said that part of the services this site will provide, where deemed essential services, we talked about the high economic services that's provided at this site. In terms of potential tenants, is there any? What should I try and ask here? Was there any reliance on that type of high-volume possible tenant in your analysis?
Objection calls for speculation. Objection as to the form of the question.
I'll rephrase. Does your analysis rely at all on the planner's statements that the potential tenants here are essential business and are providing high economic services from the site?
No.
Anyone from the board?
Hi. Just looking at the morning peak hours and the cars versus the trucks.
Right.
It looks like 64 out of 69 trips of trucks will be non-peak hours.
That third column where it says 24-hour, that's the total 24-hour estimate. So when you break those 64 trips down over the course of an hour, or 32 in over the course of a day, 32 out over the course of the day, it breaks down to one to two or three vehicle, I'm sorry, trucks per hour entering and exiting.
But I guess the question is, how do you know they're going to be non-peak? And are these? I guess they don't know the clients. You don't know what size truck. Could it be a very big truck, which is a lot slower?
It could be. It would be anything bigger than a box truck. So the ITE has hour-by-hour truck estimates based on counts that have been performed at warehouses and facilities. And that's how we create those estimates. It's from a database of actual passenger vehicles and trucks entering and exiting warehouses that have been studied and then submitted to ITE.
And would that just be like non-peak hours between the morning and evening peak hour? Or could it be at night?
I don't know if there's a nighttime restriction here. I don't know if there's a nighttime proposal by the applicant. These are, again, estimates provided by the ITE. It does show some later evening and early morning trips, but I think over the bulk of the overnight hours, you had zero trips.
Okay, and so they're just estimates based on other prior examples? Not really specific factual, like, proposal based on this development?
Well, the way traffic engineering works and the way, for example, if we were right on 202 and had to present an analysis to DOT or estimates, this is exactly what we would use. We would go to the ITE Trip Generation Manual, take the building area, and then use that to create the trip estimates for passenger vehicles and trucks for the peak hours and for 24 hours. So it's an estimating technique based on traffic counts that have actually been performed at warehouses and submitted to ITE, and then they summarize all the data.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Maybe just along the same line, just so we're all clear. The estimates that you've done are solely based upon standards. There's no indication yet from the applicant as to the type of business, so you have no real guidance as to what the actual volumes would be based upon the type of business? This is purely estimates based upon the standards?
That is correct.
Okay. If you knew the tenant, would you still do the same analysis? Or is it based upon the standards that would be generated from the type of tenant that's occupying the facility?
It's the use. And I know that sometimes there's concern about, for example, like an Amazon-type fulfillment center. But those buildings are hundreds of thousands of square feet, and they're designed differently with docks on both sides. So the building that's proposed, the box that Mr. McDonough talked about that's on A1, fits the typical warehouse category. So it's based on the land use.
So, thank you. But that wasn't quite my question. My concern is not an Amazon-type, although that would be, we'd have other places in town. We could, we'd love to have them. My concern is more that along the lines of, if there is expected to be night trips, if there is expected to be trucks loading and unloading after hours, or is it only supposed to be during some normal business time? Which I still understand that there would be an insignificant total number of trips, but I would rather have that insignificant number of trips in a 10-hour window than open to a 24-hour window.
I understand, and I don't know that that's necessarily a traffic question. I think it's up to the applicant and whatever restrictions in terms of zoning there may be within the municipality.
So now having the manual in front of me, are there other tables that you could have chosen? Or are there multiple different warehousing tables? Because I just, the only differentiation, obviously, that I saw here was about setting a location. Were classifieds a general urban, suburban area? Are there other types of areas?
So there's other, well, for warehousing, I don't know that I've seen. Well, there must be, there's dense urban, to answer your question. So the rates that we use were strictly suburban, and they were straight warehousing. ITE and their latest two additions have given urban and dense urban rates as well. We didn't go there. This is a suburban location. There's also different warehousing categories, but again, they are more applicable to larger building areas. This fits the ITE definition of a straight-up warehouse.
Additional questions from the dais? Okay, anyone from the public that would like to question this witness on her testimony with regards to the traffic study?
Maria Janasik. Because this property has only 50 feet of frontage instead of the required 500 feet of frontage, and you have two driveways, does that create any kind of a problem in terms of traffic safety?
As I testified earlier, I don't see it as a problem or a negative safety impact. It's a dead end, and it's a cul-de-sac bulb, and it's serving limited amount of traffic associated with the proposed building. So I don't think that that's an applicable standard to a dead end. In my opinion, there's no safety issue.
No safety issue, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I ask, along the same lines, is there actually a safety benefit by keeping trucks and cars separated?
I think so, and I believe Mr. McDonough had also provided that testimony. But in my opinion, yes.
Hi, Scott Armstrong, Seven Magdalene. Did, I don't think we mentioned Brown Ave at all with this. I'm assuming the trucks would be using Brown to turn around?
If that would be the nearest U-turn to the south, and then you've got the U-turn at Duke's to the north.
Right, so in order for them to go south, they'd have to go up to Duke's, loop around, hit south. And if they were going south, they'd have to turn into Brown and come up.
Right.
And did we look at the traffic that already pretty bad at Brown? With now we're adding however many trucks per, however, I'm sorry, I don't remember how many minutes or trucks it was, but we're kind of now adding a little bit more into that congested area?
So, no, we did not perform formal counts or analysis of those locations because the contribution of traffic from this use is not considered significant. It does not require analysis pursuant to DOT or the ITE.
So, okay, so this building won't affect traffic at Brown Ave?
Well, there's certainly going to be traffic that's going to use it.
Right, but I mean, and that's, because that's the only way they're going to get in here from the southbound.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Additional questions of this witness? Okay, I do not see any. Thank you.
Nope. I already gave it 30, 40 minutes.
Yeah, no, just because, yes, we're going to have lots of questioning. Yeah, it's 20 of, so we've reached our limit. So David, we got to find a date to continue?
Yes. The next available meeting would be January 13. At 7:00, you have your reorg meeting. At 7:30 is your regular meeting. It's nothing on the agenda at the moment. The next meeting after that would be the business meeting in January, January 27. And after that, we get into February. So the next empty agenda, well, you have your reorg meeting at 7:00 on January 13. Your regular meeting starts at 7:30.
Do we have any?
It's an empty agenda right now.
It's an empty agenda? Counselor?
That sounds great. The 13th would be preferred. Earlier, the better.
Okay, and we'll continue without notice, Eric?
Objector, any issue? And we'll do without? Motion to continue this hearing, Mr. Chairman, until Thursday, January 13, 2022, at 7:30 PM, or soon thereafter, as the matter may be heard without further notice.
Okay.
Thank you.
So moved. Do I have a motion?
And David, that is reorg day? So moved.
Yeah. It is a reorg day, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so we will do that. Counselor, I think for order, if we can have Mr. Ford bat leadoff? Because there seems to be a lot of questions surrounding, yeah, engineering.
We only have like 5, 10 minutes of architecture. Pretty basic. Our intent is to save like all to the end because we know most of the public comment will be on stormwater, so. It's up to you guys. I mean, it doesn't really matter to us, but we don't have extensive architecture testimony for a warehouse. It's up to you guys, really.
All right, we'll give it a shot then.
Can hold you, Mr. Gordon, for the five to 10 minutes? Let's see what happens.
For architect.
For the architect.
Obviously.
David?
Next meeting, December 2. And December, no, you have two meetings in December, the 2nd and the 9th.
Okay, so.
And you have items?
Yes.
We need to make, if there are people here tonight who cannot make either meeting, could you please advise Mr. Maskey's office as soon as possible?